Wednesday and Thursday.
Thanks to Cave Creek this week, and we got the rodeo, the new rodeo. This is, this is a big rodeo coming up on Halloween. That wasn't on purpose, that's the date that they gave us, but it is the turquoise circuit final. So it is the highest level rodeo that I've know of that we've ever had in town. This will be all the top 10 cowboys and cowgirls in the events. And it's invitation only, it's, it's quite something. And this will be the first year there, and I certainly hope it's successful. And we recognize and congratulate our rodeo committee for all the work they do to put this on. It takes a lot of volunteer hours to put on a rodeo. Next is called the public. Teresa.
Julie Goldhammer. Good afternoon, Mayor and council folks. I want to just say I'm grateful for the open space task force that was put into place in the last few weeks and the concept. But I do want to ask a question, and I realize you can't respond to this because it's not an agendized item. So these are just kind of questions and concerns. When we rezone a commercial buffer property, there is, I believe, part of the ordinance or a policy to allow the applicant to purchase land to give back to the town. And I would love to understand better the purposes and the strategies behind what parcels of land are actually selected and why. Give you an example, and it's going to come up later in this meeting when we talk about a rezoning down in the SAP area. If these properties were donated to the town for the benefit of the citizens, it would be really great. Sometimes parcels could be for the benefit of the area where we were rezoning the actual commercial buffer. The, the land purchase was actually explained to us during one of these meetings. And the applicant, because I'm not going to go against any kind of applicant, I'm just talking in general about the policy, was very proud of the fact that they had purchased a lot larger than the lot that they are actually going to put up for rezoning. I think that's all great and wonderful, but I think it would be fabulous if that lot could be donated back to the neighborhood that it was impacting either in some sort of open space, park space, or some sort of ability to get money to fix some of the roads, the shoulders and all that in our area where we need some paving done. My other point that I would like to ask for clarification on is how come sometimes applicants are allowed to use the town council chambers and other times applicants have to pay to use their own meeting spaces? It's very confusing for people who are a little bit uninformed. When an applicant is actually meeting here in town council chambers, it looks like it's already a done deal. And then a lot of people ask, hey, well, how come they were allowed to use it and another applicant was not? I'm sure there's nothing nefarious here, it's just sort of feedback or input. I would love counsel to direct staff and look at the policies going forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
No additional speakers.
Mayor and council, I'll have staff follow up with Ms. Goldhammer.
I think we're talking about density transfer there, probably. Yeah, it's on the agenda later on in the meeting, too. An example of that. Town manager report.
In the interest of time, I have no report tonight.
Okay. Consent agenda, we have none. We're going to move up item eight to the very beginning here to get some people off to other things due to scheduling. So item eight is the council discussion possible authorization for the town manager to execute an agreement for the purchase of a lot with groundwater rights with the Harkaway Valley Landowners LLC and authorization for the town manager and staff to execute other necessary documents, including execution and submission of a town application to authorize importation of Harkaway Valley water to the town.
Mayor and council, our utilities director, Sean Cruz-Weisner, is actually on virtually. He planned to be here in person, but unfortunately was not able to be here in person. He has a presentation that he's going to present to you. And then we also have our legal counsel here and water policy advisor, who is also available to answer any questions that might come up as well. She's sitting right up here in the front. That I'll turn it over to Mr. Cruz-Weisner.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Good evening, Mayor and council. Yes, I'd like to present to you the Harkaway Valley Water Purchase Agreement that we're moving, we're asking council move forward with. And I want to start by giving you some background. Why are we doing this? And we've talked a lot about water resources for the town of late. You know, we completed the integrated master plan last year, and we've already had some other workshops on, on this. So just for general background, I'll go through the first few slides quickly. There are pending cuts to the Colorado River supplies that are going to go to Arizona. They come down and subsequently will come down to the town. Since Central Arizona Project actually provides about 90% of the town's water resources. So in summary, the Colorado River, when it was reallocated back in 1920s, was over allocated based on what it can actually provide. It was divided up between upper and lower basins. Arizona is in a lower basin state. The current agreements expire at the end of 2026. So by January of 2027, the federal government needs to make an approved reallocation of what's, what's going to be the new rules of the river. So discussions have been going well in some capacities, but not everybody can agree really what the final analysis is. Brian, next slide. So how does that affect the town? It leads to a situation that by 2027, we're going to be in, I use the term a shortage situation. At the top here, I list the town's current water supplies. You know, just over 2,000 acre feet of, of capacity. And that's our municipal industrial CAP, Central Arizona Project, Colorado River Water. We have 386 acre feet of non-Indian agricultural water, NIA. We also have some, three active wells in Desert Hills, and we are doing some work on the Desert Hills. Can you see on that slide, Brian, one more time? The slide behind it. So our, our current thoughts are and current planning projections are a 25% cut is, is coming by 20, January 2027 to the town's municipal and industrial supplies. And then we'll have 100% cut into the NIA water. In fact, we actually ordered NIA water for next year to recharge to give us more long-term shortage credits. And we were told, no, they are not ordering that. So we will not get that 386 acre feet or any of the NIA water next year. So this, the situation we're facing is that by 2027, the town will not have secure water resources. So we've been working diligently on that. That sort of sets the, sort of the pessimistic tone. Next slide, Brian. And the next two slides show sort of a stack graph of what we're, we're dealing with. You know, we're in 2025 right now, and the stack graphs show our water resource is available to the town, and they drop in 27, and that is the loss of, of the Central Arizona Project water. So it puts us in a situation where we have a shortage. And we're planning for a 25% cut. We do not currently know what the final cut will be. There's different planning scenarios, but we thought pessimistically or a good number for us to use is 25%. And the NIA water may be available in some years, but not, can't be relied on as a long-term reliable supply. So next slide, Brian. And just growth in the system will, will actually cause a shortage. So this adds some of the numbers to this chart. And at the top, it shows you your shortage situations that we're, we're planning for. Here, we expect potentially to be up to 300 acre feet short come January 27, 27. So what are we doing to that? We're actually working on a number of things. We're looking, the town does have long-term storage credits in place. It's basically a savings account for our unused cap water. So we've actually been putting that into the ground, and our goal is to get some agreements in place in the upcoming months that allows us to work with other agencies to access that water. That helps bridge the gap for a few years. And then we're also looking at things like reactivating some of the Cave Creek wells. Our thoughts on the Cave Creek wells is that while that could help us, we think long-term they can buy us some years, and then we might run into water quality or volumetric issues. But we're trying to work on multiple things. And at the top there, it says contractual obligations. What that is, and when we're showing the red on the bar graph, it's, there's assumed 2% growth in the system. And the contractual obligations are the existing neighborhoods in the town and that have assured water supplies designate or certificates that were issued by the water company when the town purchased them. So we have to obligate those. And then there's some, when we did the master planning, we also took into account neighborhoods that were plotted prior to 1980, which the town has several that are not fully built out. So we, we factor that in. And there's also growth that organically will help happen around the distribution system. Not, the distribution system is not supplying everybody in the town. So we have a lot of cases where if we model it out, just asking all the undeveloped lots within 500 acre, 500 feet of the distribution system, that's another 300 to 400 acre feet of water we'd have to add on top of this. So we have a bunch of scenarios, but our main goal is to try and, you know, why do we bridge the gap with a, a forthcoming reduction in the town's Colorado River allocation being Central Arizona Project can provide? Next slide, Brian. So I've talked about this, and we have short term. We're talking about conservation. That will help, everything that we can do. We've upgraded the water meters. We now have the MI360, so we have customers can't get access to the 60% of our customers that are now getting hourly or, or quite regular readings can see that data themselves and set them our own limits. We're trying to look at reactivating some of the wells. And with the water banking, we're trying to get access to, we're recharging. We all have a little bit more next year. We are hopeful to be able to put another 600 acre feet into the ground next year as a water bank for the town. That's going to drop down to 300 because we do not, we will not get any NIA water. But we do think we have good opportunities in place to get us through the first few years. Really, the agreement's in place to get access to our storage credit and/or the Arizona Water Banking Authority. That's the agency that was put in place several decades ago, and they have been storing unused Colorado River water for the state to actually back up the municipal industrial suppliers like ourselves. But on top of that, we need to start looking for new water resources. And the town has really been participating in two projects. A Harkaway Valley, it's a groundwater basin west of the Phoenix metro area and, and the Bartlett Dam project. That is actually additional storage, new storage capacity is being built on the Bartlett Dam on the Verde River in, in relation to our reaction to the fact that the Horseshoe Dam upstream of Bartlett Dam, it has a capacity issue. So SRP, who manages that system, is looking to increase the size of Bartlett Dam to get more storage. The town is participating in that. Nuance of Bartlett Dam is it's actually meant for us backing up our system, not for new growth. But we are still actively involved with both projects. But tonight's activity is talking about Harkaway Valley and the water from that project. Next slide, Brian. So what is this? We see a couple of really good benefits to Harkaway Valley water. It provides a new option, a new long-term option for increasing the town's water resource portfolio as well as diversifying it because it would be actually giving us access to a groundwater basin outside of the Phoenix metro area. Harkaway is a basin, and the next slide, which give you a graphic, is it's called a non-irrigation expansion area, INA. That's actually a legal definition. It was set aside as part of the Groundwater Management Act. And as, there's five of them in total. Harkaway is the first one being developed. And they were set aside to actually import water to the Phoenix Active Management Area, the Phoenix AMA. The town of Cave Creek is part of the Active Management Area. So we follow the rules. We have to make sure that we have assured water supplies. And we have to stay in compliance with several other things as being a member of the Active Management Area. At this point, Arizona Department of Water Resources has worked with landowners in Harkaway Basin, and they've approved some modeling. And it shows that that one project that we're looking at participating in has theoretically over 80,000 acre feet per year of groundwater available for 100 years. So that meets the state laws that if we are issuing a new certificate for a residential home, that we actually have to ensure that we have 100-year assured water supply. So the modeling that they've done out there as part of that project has shown the water is available. And then what we're trying to do is actually participate in that project to, to buy an allocation of that. Back in February, town council had approved a non-disclosure agreement. That allowed us actually to work with the group and, and learn more about it and to see again what, what issues are available and are, might come forward and how the town might want to participate. Next slide, Brian. So again, I like always give a graphic of where we're at. And Harkaway is west. Effectively, the project location is centered on 455th Avenue. So it's quite a ways out there. So it's, it's out past the Phoenix AMA. We've got to get a new exhibit here, but you can show Cave Creek. It's, it's out past Buckeye is where it is. It's actually its own groundwater basin outside the Phoenix area. The unique thing about Harkaway is a really good thing about that project is you see the Central Arizona Project by exit. So the town does have capacity in the, in the CAP canal. And in fact, in 27, when they reduce our, we expect to get reductions in our municipal and industrial water supplies. That will free up capacity in the cap canal that we actually have available, but we don't have a water source to, the Central Arizona Project doesn't have water to fill for us. The same also goes for our non-Indian agricultural water supplies that, that gives us another 386 acre feet of capacity in the Central Arizona Project that we could utilize for a wheeling agreement. So a great thing for the town is that if we can get water resources, groundwater resources in Harkaway Valley, we have a transportation mechanism in the Central Arizona Project. And then the town has our own treatment facility as well as the IGA in place with the City of Phoenix and the new City of Phoenix interconnect. So once that water gets brought into the valley, we could either treat it and deliver it and treat it ourselves or have Phoenix treat and deliver it to us. So it helps leverage the infrastructure we've already put in place and we've already, this town has spent monies on. So next slide, Brian. This is a little more of a close-up of the project boundaries. You know, Harkaway Basin is fairly large. The project boundaries are sort of the, in the bottom right corner there, sort of the green shaded area. And there's actually other projects out there. Scott still has its own project outside of, of this project with Harkaway Landowners, and there's a few other owners out there. So when Central Arizona, or sorry, when Arizona Department of Water Resources looked at that, they looked at this entire basin. They created a new groundwater model for this, this basin and all the potential users existing. It's currently got some agricultural uses and future uses. Again, it was, this area was set aside as an import area into the Phoenix metro area, the, the Phoenix AMA. So you can see the project boundary there, and that what it is, is these landowners, the town would participate in the project by buying one lot in subdivision. That subdivision lot gives us access to groundwater resources. So it's an expensive lot, but it's what the value is, is the groundwater we're getting access to. And they, instead of dividing up the entire property boundary, what they're doing is we're just buying within a lot, and then we get that access to that groundwater resources for the town. Next slide. So what we're looking at doing is a purchase of 500 acre feet. Based on our master planning, based on the 25% cut to the municipal industrial supplies, that should get us into the mid 2035 timeframe. And then the town needs to be looking at other new water resources moving forward. But this, this would be the first tranche of new water to be brought into the town's water portfolio to augment what we have. We do believe that some of the other solutions we have in place, like getting access to our storage credits, getting access to Arizona Water Banking Authority credits and reactivating the wells can help us bridge the first few years to allow this project to get to a point where we get wet water. So what the project is asking for is actually a payment of earnest money. It's like buying a house. In fact, we're buying a lot. They want us to put $100,000 down to show our earnest. We've already done the, the non-disclosure agreement to show our interest in the project. The full cost is shocking, and I know every time I look at this, I know, knowing our financial situations, but this town needs water resources. It's $11.2 million, so the escrow earnest money would come off the top of that. And they're requesting that we make it by February 15th of next year to secure this. So the purchase is actually just for the, the groundwater rights. It still doesn't get us physical access. So there's, there's several other hurdles we still need to work on. We would work with the Arizona Department of Water Resources to submit an application to authorize to import that water. That's the first step, and there's several other permits in place. But we've already talked to like Central Arizona Project because we already have a wheeling or, or capacity. You know, it's just a simple wheeling agreement to allow us to access that room in the cap canal to get that water to either us or Phoenix to treat. There's still a big component that's still being worked on and actually has active, is actually being worked on, is how do you get this water into the cap canal? So there are existing groundwater wells within the project boundary. So they actually have good, a lot of that actually helped them really with their groundwater modeling. And this is an anecdotal note. I looked at the water groundwater model underneath this project boundary. There's actually two real large suppressions within Harkaway Valley, and one of them happens because in the project area. It, the groundwater table goes down to 8,000 feet below the properties down there. But state law actually requires that you can only model if you're going to draw the groundwater table down to 1,000 feet below surface level. So that's what they've done with the, and they say it will work out there, and, and the air is, the state has signed off on that ability. The next thing is there are existing wells, so my new wells will probably have to be drilled. There'll be some treatment. The water actually, well, it's groundwater. As it, once it goes into the Central Arizona Project, it has to meet their standards. So CAP has actually adopted what they call raw water, non-Colorado River water standards. They're waiting for the Bureau of Reclamation to, to finalize that. And then there's, once that's treated, then there's a conveyance. There's a distance from the project boundaries. They have to cross under the I-10 and then do a structure into the cap canal. Well, there actually is an organization, a private organization that is actually looking to lead the charge on that because there's actually two other large participants. Like I mentioned, Buckeye is participating in the Harkaway project, and so is Queen Creek. So talking with the, the private agency that was looking to do forward with it, they're looking at a three to five-year timeframe to actually complete the physical infrastructure. So by us making the purchase and getting access to that groundwater in three to five years, that could be in the cap canal being delivered to either us or Phoenix for delivery to customers. To, and we think that meets all our timeframes that we're looking at for right now to, that we can bridge that gap with our other solutions in place. But again, that's another big component that we're working on. I wish I could tell you all the numbers on that, but it's, it's a, it's a moving target right now. We, we, that was one of the things that, while paying the earnest money gets us a seat at that table to hear all those discussions. I've been talking to other agencies and hearing it on the sidelines. So this will give us that ability to get more details. Next slide, Brian. So I've been talking along here. I know this is a big thing. We don't like bringing things like this forward to the town easily because, you know, it's, it's, we, you know, it's, we're a small agency, and this is a large amount of money. But when we look at it in the context of being able to provide water to our existing customers as well as provide for what we look at as contractual obligations, the town's water system had obligations to existing subdivisions that were issued by certificates that we need to meet. So by approving the agreement tonight, we make the payment of the $100,000 escrow fee. This allows us to move forward with it. The town, the finance director can work on how to get the payment put in place. They're asking that we have the final payment, the 11.2 total payment, so that's going to come off that by next February. We're looking at multiple things, but this isn't the only action on this for the council. But this is the next step in the process. It goes back to when we signed the NDA earlier this year that allows us to move forward. But we do see us from staff who recommend that we move forward with this project as a viable solution for helping secure the town's water resources for existing customers as well as allowing for a little bit of growth. But you know, I, I point out that 500 acre feet, a lot of that is actually just making up for what we anticipate to be a 25% cut. If it's less, that gives us a little more reading space. If it's more, then you know, we will have to be scrambling to find more. You know, we, it's, it's hard making these decisions, and it's hard for me even bring these forward to council simply because there's a lot of unknowns. We don't know what the final cuts are going to be. There will be cuts. You know, it's unrealistic to not assume that the Colorado River supplies to the state won't be cut and that the, uh, Cave Creek will not be impacted. Cave Creek had to foresight years ago as a private water company to actually get connected to the Central Arizona Project as a renewable water supply, knowing that groundwater wells up here did not support a, a water system. You know, when the town purchased Desert Hills, I hate to use the term, but that system was failing. The groundwater wells did not support the demand that they had. So Cave Creek has been helping, and as 1,900 customers out there have actually been helping pay for the system improvements to make sure that we have a reliable system for all 4,500-plus customers right now. So with that, I will stop talking and can answer any questions. And Michelle's available or anybody else on their team's available to answer any questions.
First of all, Sean, thanks for being here. We know you have issues that you're dealing with, and you took time out from those to, to come here tonight. And I want to congratulate you on a very nice, concise presentation. Council. Dusty?
Yeah, I've got one. The 100, that, where all we're voting on tonight is the $100,000, correct?
Correct.
It's, it's proceed with the next step, which is the earnest money.
Essentially, what we're committing is $100,000 tonight. Is that what, where's that money coming from? I don't want to be in violation of 509. Is it coming from the?
Or Sherri, do you, do you want to address that?
Yeah, I think we've, of, Mayor and Councilmember, I think we've identified it. We're just going to take it out of the ongoing operational budgets.
Okay.
It's not, it's not impacting anything else. It's not impacting transfers. It's just coming out of the operational budget this year.
Because we've been in violation of that law for a number of years, and I'd like to make sure that we get rid of that onus over our heads as soon as we can. I realize it's not going to be this year, it's not going to be next year, but it's going to be within a few years.
Sherri?
Just elaborate on that, Sherri. So I mean, I think Sean covered it, the, the 100,000. He is saying that he would have capacity within his operating budget to cover that. So, but I, I believe it's to sign this agreement. So as part of the agreement, you do the, the earnest money, and then we would have to follow up with the 11 million if we could choose to continue forward with this before the, the deadline.
Correct, but right now we only have to vote on the 100,000, correct? And directing you to proceed, directing the staff to proceed.
Need to approve the agreement as well. You have to approve the agreement.
There's a lot of unknowns there. As a matter of fact, could, Michelle, could you give us both the pros and cons?
I would be happy to try to summarize them, and I apologize if I leave anything out. I think the pros of acting on this agreement tonight are that there is water potentially available out there to supplement the town's water supply, which may not be the case in future years. The water that we're looking at in the Harkaway is groundwater that's stored in the ground, so it's already there, and it's being held by the ground. So the storage facility is already there. The other pro is that if we get in as an initial participant, and the, the town of Queen Creek already bought water rights, I'll call them, and that the city of Buckeye already bought water rights, and there are probably going to be a few more. But if we get in with the initial group, we will, if all goes well, get water to the town in an earlier year than if we wait. Because if we wait, we would not necessarily be in with that group. We would be in the, the next group, and we may not be able to get water as quickly. The other pro would be that this is being done pursuant to a project that is authorized under current state law. And the Department of Water Resources has reviewed the proposed importation plan and the project details for three years now and found it sufficient to satisfy all legal requirements. The other pro, I would say, is that we've got City of Buckeye, Town of Queen Creek, and the State Land Department as participants that all have similar needs and desires for this water project to succeed. The cons I'll go into, and you know, we could go into a lot more on pros and cons, but the cons are the cost is, is very large, and it's not completely known today because this $11.2 million will purchase the water right, as I'm calling it, the entitlement. But it will not cover the cost of building the infrastructure to get the water out of the ground and over to the CAP canal. There will be some work that needs to be done, getting environmental review. It's, that, that cost is relatively minor compared to the rest of it. The water treatment cost is not known, so that will be an additional cost that the town isn't sure about today or even know very well. We will hopefully get some more information over the next few months about those costs before the town has to fully commit to close on the property. The, the other con is that there are other agencies and processes that need to be completed in order to get the water from the Harkaway Basin to the town of Cave Creek's turnout. That being, there will be infrastructure right-of-way's and things that have not yet been secured in between the project lands and the CAP canal. in between the project lands and the CAP canal. There will be a United States Bureau of Reclamation environmental review process that the project, uh, will need to go through to ensure that the federal government in making its decision to allow use of the canal in the manner that's proposed, um, has complied with the National Environmental Policy Act. And those things can all take time and have unexpected delays. And so there is some uncertainty with the actual project timeline. Um, the other cons would be, um, long-term, there may be some obligations for the town to manage some of the, what goes on in the Harkaway Hala Basin as part of an association the town would be a member of. And you may need to work on making sure people control the dust and, and manage their land in accordance with the, um, restrictions that they've placed on the project lands. And those are probably relatively minor in the scheme of things, but those are potential cons in the future. That's all I can think of right now.
Other questions from council?
One quick question there.
Tom?
Um, Michelle, what's the latest acre foot lost roughly? And I, and it's even, I guess it's transitional from what we thought. And then the last figure and then potential for growth, but the days of 3,000 an acre foot water are in the memory banks now. Uh, but can you just iterate in this process where we've been and where we're headed perhaps on acre foot cost?
Um, cost break, are you saying of alternative water sources or?
Proposal. If you take the amount of money that's being requested by staff to make this directional approach, what is it equate out to for an acre foot of water?
For the water purchase alone, um, which is the agreement that's in front of you tonight, the cost breaks down to 22,500 acre, or excuse me, 22,000 dollars per acre foot.
Okay.
For 400 years.
And then we've had discussions about, that's your starting points, like an automobile in the showroom lot. If you add your fees and so forth and things that are realistically expected by you, what other numbers have you looked at?
And those would be part of the unknown that we will need to do more due diligence. My understanding is that those numbers are being developed at currently by engineers and we'll be looking at that in the coming months.
But haven't we had conversations about it could very well be north of 30,000 per acre foot?
It certainly could, um, I wouldn't put an upper limit on anything these days. Um, generally looking at just the, you know, what other sorts of water sources are out there. The only real sort of alternative potential that I'm aware of right now would be like the Bartlett project and their 32 or 33,000 dollars per acre foot. So you can see that kind of, that there's not really a market, but it's, we're up there in the expensive range already.
That's a good thing.
But, but the Bartlett water cannot be used to address it because it's not a hundred year supply certified, hundred year supply. It is basically emergency water to store and use if, if in fact the Colorado River could be a lot more than 25, that 25% number is just the number that we've been, uh, given by the experts in state government and agencies, uh, as a planning number, but no one knows the right number.
No one knows. And if, as a student of Colorado River law, if this went to litigation and the states aren't able to make any agreement, the CAP could be cut almost a hundred percent because that's how the law works right now. So we are certainly at risk any, either way you slice it. But I can't imagine that that would be the result our states allow to happen. Um, and so I, I have hope that we are looking closer to the 25% we analyzed, um, in the examples.
Thank you. Other questions?
Thank you, Mayor, um, for Sean or for Michelle. Um, what is the potential for us to recoup expenditures for CAP water with the 25% more or less cut for the future?
Uh, Mayor Councilmember, so the town has had discussions moving forward, you know, we have ongoing, uh, um, we charge new users a capacity fee for the hookup to the system and they're paying for the infrastructure. Um, and then they have an ongoing fee for that, uh, our treatment delivery of that water. So we are talking about implementing a new, uh, water resource, um, capacity fee. So for new customers would be helping us pay, pay that back in effect on the system. So that's, that's one of the ways we're looking at trying to make it equitable. Cause you know, we're making the purchase upfront, um, but in some cases this is the water for future users. So it makes sense to do it as a capacity fee.
So that didn't fully address my question, which was if, uh, finances have been allocated for CAP water based on our historic levels, but in the future we'll be receiving less than that. What is the impact on the budgeted amount for?
Oh.
And to CAP?
Yeah, so we do, uh, annually and then, uh, CAP actually issues a table and they do like a five year projection, what they think the numbers are going to be. But because they haven't, and their projection tables haven't put on a, a, um, uh, I think a, a good enough estimate of what the impacts of losing 25% of their water resources. Cause they, CAP has fixed costs, if people don't remember that, um, the federal government actually loaned all the money to construct the facilities necessary to transport Colorado River water and, and pump it into central Arizona. Um, so that's our capital cost and we have to pay for removing that water. So, um, I expect that they're going to actually start bringing, raising those rates, um, more so. And we've tried to do some projections with the current rate model, but we don't know because they haven't told us, because they don't know what the cuts going to be. So they, our cost of raw CAP water and using the canal will go up. It's anticipated it will go up. We don't know.
There, there's a capital charge that you pay for your capacity, CAP that would be fixed every year. That won't change hopefully, but the amount of that you, you know, for the water you order, whether it be Harkaway Hala water or CAP water, that amount is expected to go up because of the shortages.
Sean, my, my memory says that we're paying somewhere around four to $500 per acre foot for CAP water with both fees. Is that correct? Which is, we're talking here about 22,500 to $30,000 per acre foot.
Different measure.
Oh, you're right. Yeah.
For 100 years.
Yeah, 100 years. Yeah. I, I beg your pardon.
And it, that's actually not equivalent because this is really, you're paying for the water right with the 11.2 million. If you buy the Harkaway Hala, you've paid for the water right, you would still have to pay the CAP charges to get it delivered because they're charging you for the electricity that it takes to pump it to you. So it's actually going to be the cost of CAP water plus the 11.2 million.
Correction, you're, you're right. I, I made an error there. Other questions from council?
Uh, Michelle, you mentioned a hundred year supply, but there's so mitigating factors that it's not a given. And it implies that a hundred years is comparable to the AMA standards under the 1980 groundwater management act. But subsidence can be a factor. The actual quality of the water, especially with arsenic mitigation and saline. I mean, it's, if you'd want the good news, I guess it's a leap of faith. And it's been reviewed by the state and it's seen as the new norm for sustaining the population in the desert southwest. And it has precedent with other communities here in Maricopa County. Nobody's had any discussion or morality review of taking a resource from underneath another part of the residents of the state because the money and the will and the infrastructure is available to bring it in to maintain, uh, at prices that no one ever would have thought would have been paid for an acre foot of water. But, um, I think the concept of paper water is really beginning to be understood here in the state. And you can go back to the old days where they said whiskey's for drinking and water's for fighting. But the more I thought about that, the more I thought about it. It's still kind of true in 2025. Uh, this part of the country had people selling, uh, snake oil. Uh, you could pay them to make it rain. They had bottles of firewater and stuff like that. So some of the people involved in this investment consortium, without getting into the details, it's all public record, that make it another part of the choice to, it needs to be an awareness on a choice of this little town of 5,000 whether it wants to do that. But, um, the larger meaning of moving water this far, that's of this challenging of quality to make it potable. Uh, we're currently lifting water 824 feet from Lake Havasu of a mountain with great electricity to put it in the CAP canal. And we get down here to Cave Creek Road and then the town pays for lifting it from there 1,200 feet to get it up here. So it's a technological marvel, all of these things that even such a thing exists, but, uh, cost and the ability of the town to pay and, uh, and, and whether this is just a feel-good, give the appearance that we've been proactive as a council decision is subject to interpretation. But when the cost finally settle after this thing goes through, uh, it's going to raise larger issues of, what have we got ourselves in for? And I won't do my usual five minutes, I'm sure you appreciate that, but the initial purchase of the water company and all the actual figures of money paid for with taxpayer dollars here in the community, not mentioning how much money we've spent over the years since 1986, which is about a third of a billion. Not mentioning the 40 million that Sean needs to get through the intermediate maintenance requirements. And now we have this 11 million. It's not so much the price of water, it's the price of this location to give the appearance and understanding of water security. Everybody understands the, the CAP and, and the, and the lake and so forth and the, the, the arrangements between the states and everything changing. I think everybody understands that. But this term, there are three issues that are going to determine the future of the town. This is one. The second is going to be the decision of the council to review its water companies, whether it wants to retain them or whether it wants to put them back in private handing. And the third is the state land acquisition. In a sense, all three of these are woven together and they interact with each other based on how we spend our money. And I don't need to illustrate that more than just the mention. But to me, it's not just the cost of water or the feeling of security that there's water, even though it's paper water. I think for me, the concern I have is the larger cost to the community. With 5,000 people and a $57 million annual budget, at some point, I don't know that we're living beyond our means or spending beyond our means or trying to keep up with the larger communities. This project is a solution to hypergrowth. And we don't have hypergrowth yet here in Cave Creek, right down the highway on Carefree Highway you do. But, uh, and maybe this is a sound interim plan. But I hope we give as much due diligence with you particularly and the attorney and the manager over water companies, public or private. Because it doesn't appear that of affair with providing water is anybody sustain, it just doesn't. So, um, I'm more of a wet sheet on this issue than most, or all of my colleagues probably. But, um, it's aspirational. And I think it's aspirational with such uncertainty that, come look us up in 10 years and see if we made the right choice and if we're willing to hold it.
Okay, we're, we're still in the, the question session, so there's a time later for speeches. All right, uh, any more questions? Uh, yes, Tom.
Michelle, we, we know we're going to need water. We, thank you. We know we're going to need water. Uh, it appears that there are two viable options at this point. One of them is at some point the Bartlick Dam expansion, which is probably at least 10 years ahead. And this one, using the Arcahala Valley, do we have other viable alternatives for finding water?
That's a very good question. There are, um, limited, um, choices out there. I would say the Bartlett is surface water and the town would be one of the lowest priority to that. So there's, there's, the Bartlett is not a reliable supply, like we're looking forward to get into people's tops every year. That's more of a, um, it'd be nice to have it if we could. Um, the other options are very slim. They're buying stored water from other communities, figuring out how to get it here, which is a lot of very difficult things. That's, that's our retail price. That's much higher than this price. Um, there's not a lot out there that's for sale because people are holding on to their stored water. So that's not a great idea. And most of it's downstream, not upstream. There are Indian communities that do have some supplies that have traditionally been leased on occasion to communities. But my view is that that, those days are over because those same communities are also going to be suffering shortages and they pretty much have leased their last lease unless it's maybe a short-term lease. So.
The term viable is very important here.
Right, right. And then, and then there is the, the Colorado River Indian, um, tribes along the Colorado River who have one of the oldest, um, rights have expressed interest on occasion in setting up a program that would potentially allow on project or on, on reservation projects to be done in exchange for getting some amount of water that could be imported. That program is not fully baked yet is my understanding. And my suspicion is that it will be more expensive than the Harkaway Hala option, but I don't know that.
But I, I want to address the, 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 uh, you said that Bartlett was a solution. Bartlett is not a solution to water for the town. It cannot be used to supply houses because it's, it's here one year and then 10 years go by and it's not there. So the, the 807 or 27 acre feet that we showed, the only source of water we have is Harkaway Hala to beat that. Bartlett does not meet the quality. Is that correct?
In my view, that's correct.
No, well, I'm not your view, that's the law.
The law is a great and varied thing. It could take a lot of time to discuss, but the, there are.
Yes or no?
The Bartlett, the Bartlett process would be subject to claims from other users on, under surface water law, so it's not a done deal.
Specifically, Bartlett Dam water cannot be used to meet the hundred year requirement.
Oh, yes.
For subdivisions. Is that correct or not?
That is correct. It would not be considered reliable enough.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, other questions? This is questions. Okay, there's public comment, so.
I have no one.
No comment. Well, this is, uh, okay, come on, David.
David Phelps, Cave Creek resident. It seems to me that, uh, part of the solution to your questions from Councilman McGuire and, and the mayor's question, um, my understanding is that subdivision property owners are required to bring their own water. So that's not our problem. Uh, I know you can't re-answer, but.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, thi- this is water that was agreed to, we agreed to supply this water decades and decades ago. And this, no, this is all contractual.
But you're saying that we have.
These are, this is certificated by the state of Arizona, most of it.
So the big answer here is if we had the courage to look at alternative ownership, they have groundwater. They've already bought it. They bought it 20 years ago. It would be in their interest to come in, especially if we had growth potential for them. That's my, that's the case to be looking at here. Do you want somebody else to have this monkey on their back? Or are we going to take these shots in the dark at paper water schemes? And maybe we can build something in five years at unknown, uh, final cost for a town our size. I mean, uh, the risk is unlimited with this. We get one acre of land. Um, the seller's not responsible for hazards that are there that are related to farming. Uh, does anybody know what hazardous materials farmers use? Uh, and what happens if we get, get into a three-year pumping drawdown and we find out that the subsidence shut the whole thing down? Then where are we? There's not a lot of good alternatives. Once we go pass over tea kettle into this deal and we keep justifying spending 10 million here and 5 million there because we've already spent 10 million here and 5 million there. We could have this problem be owned by somebody else. We could go back to doing what our small town should be doing. We could do it a lot better. And we'd have a lot more resources to do it with. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is that the end of the? Okay. Okay, so we are ready for a motion?
I'll do it if I may.
Yeah.
This is a motion to authorize the town manager to execute an agreement for the purchase of a lot with groundwater rights with the Arcahala Valley Landowners LLC and authorization for the town manager and staff to execute their necessary documents, including execution and submission of a town application to authorize importation of Arcahala water to the town.
Second.
Okay, you have the motion, Tom, and, uh?
Bottom line is we need water. Bottom line is we need water and we're going to need it soon. And this is the best way to get it. There aren't many alternatives. Maybe some of the things that Michelle has talked about could happen. There's a lot that could happen, but there's not much that's likely to happen. Water is security and this is the most secure deal we can get.
Joe?
So if you understand the dynamic of what's going on right now in the Southwest with water, the upper basin states, et cetera, um, there's not a lot of water right now. And um, this water at Harla Haika, Harla, Harla Hey. Oh, anyway, it is um, it's under the ground right now. It is there. Unlike the Bartlett Dam water, we don't know what the deal is with that down the road. We gambled on that, the last council did. And you know, commend him for doing it, but hey, we need water to drink. And this water at Harla Haika, whatever, you guys know what I'm talking about. Water is drinking water. We're not talking about building with it. We're talking about drinking water for the citizens of this town, and that's what we owe you guys. So drinking water and there are no alternatives. Going into a serious crisis right now. This is Econ one oh one in a way, you know, they've got something. We don't know all the variables. It's kind of like if Michigan goes to the national championship this year. We don't know if they're going to make it or not, but we want to buy our tickets now because they could be pretty darn expensive down the road, or they could flop and we have to eat it. But you know what? This is our water now. This is what we need. This is our livelihood. You know, water is the elixir of life. This is something we have to do.
Uh, other comments? I'll look this direction first. Dusty, you want to weigh in?
So I have a lot of concerns. Um, we're buying an acre of land for eleven million bucks and paper water for five hundred acre feet a year for a hundred years. We have no idea what the transportation costs are. We have no idea what the what the pumping costs are going to be. We have no idea what any of the other associated costs are going to be. And it's a little bit premature to be going whole hog into something when we don't know all the costs. We should have those costs in a few months. There's no reason we can't push this off for a few months. There's no reason why we can't table this discussion until, you know, March or April. Um, the water is still going to be sitting under the ground? Yeah, it may take an extra half a year or year to do that. But I believe we were told by Sean previously that we have four or five years worth of water sitting in the ground right now. So this doesn't seem to me to be some kind of emergency we have to do today. So I I just think we're rushing to failure here. There are other options that can be looked at and we're not looking at them.
Comments down here?
Yes, thank you.
Cynthia?
Uh, I would agree with Dusty that we certainly have more questions than we have informed answers at this point. Uh, but but by approving the motion tonight, we're giving us ourselves an extended timeline to gather more information, whether it takes us down the road to securing this purchase, this water acquisition, or to consider other details that we may have from purchase opportunities from other entities, uh, it buys us some time. And to me, that's the most important thing of doing an action tonight is to make our best use of that time.
Tom, do you want to?
I guess we're thinking, um, I hope it goes well. I hope uh, experts and procrastinators, not procrastators, predictors, whatever the term I was looking for. I, or visionary and the ability to move water from one place to another and have account for something. Uh, to me, it's a Ponzi scheme. Uh, we're dealing with the same people that we dealt with here horrifically in the eighties and nineties and seventies. Uh, convicted criminal enterprise and individuals who now is working with the New York City hedge fund, his family, his secondary family hidden behind LLCs. Those are our business partners in this enterprise. And um, Cave Creek is now caught up in something that it doesn't really have the throw weight to self determine. After a certain point, we're along for the ride, almost like a pilot fish on the whale. These large communities in the valley buying water to try to satisfy the incredible amount of growth coming to their communities. We have a semiconductor plants up here. That's why I mentioned the state lands earlier. If we don't get it now, we're not going to. But um, I just think it's a pick and a poke, and I think it's a replicative of presentations made in this state in the last thirty years or even earlier in some cases that resulted in federal criminal charges, American county criminal charges, and jury awards two hundred and one hundred and seventy one million in two thousand and seven. People should do a little bit of homework on who we're doing business with. So uh, it's aspirational, maybe it'll be worthwhile, but I think we're in over our head. And I think we need to question the larger issue of our relationship with water and how we provide it. So sorry to be the dissenting vote, but I appreciate the time you've provided, Mayor.
Gotcha.
Central Arizona Project has been the lifeline for this state since nineteen eighty five. And that is when Cave Creek got its allocation. And Cave Creek and its elected officials were egregiously neglectful of protecting that water supply. For thirty six years, we could have been protecting our supply. Since nineteen ninety six, C A P has been banking water underground. We did nothing. We left our water in the canal that we weren't using, our excess water, which was hundreds of acre feet. And somebody else came along and bought it. We paid capital charges for that water. We we spent money on all of our annual allocation and we did nothing to protect our excess water. I will not be an elected official that's egregiously neglectful again. This is a deal that our governor has endorsed. And the Arizona Department of Water Resources, which takes nothing lightly, it has done its due diligence on the partnerships that are involved in this water deal. And I have every faith that they made good decisions when they agreed to it. Even prior to the state agreeing to this, in twenty twenty three, the governor's water council recommend recommended this deal, which was a compilation of fifty people or more representing municipalities, Indian tribes and commercial entities. So for us to say that this is too risky, it is, but that's our job is to assess the risk and make an educated decision to protect ourselves, our property values, which people are already questioning me. Catherine, should I sell my house? Do we have enough water? That's a very difficult question for me to answer. Honestly, it's frightening. And I am not willing to put our home values and our ability to raise our families at risk. That's the risk. That's the risk. Can we live without this water? I don't think so. And so I am entirely supportive of this motion and I think it's in our best interest of the town.
So I agree with her completely, and I wanted to say as well that I was not on the last council and currently the council up here approved the Bartlett Dam Expansion. That's the only other water gamble that we can go for right now. We are in that position right now where this isn't the old days. This is the new days. This is the now, you know? You come here like me forty five years ago. Oh, we have water problems. Nobody thinks about it. You'll be thinking about it when these upper basin states don't get together with us and you know, make this thing work at the end of next year. But my point is, is that there's a lot of things that could cost more money right now in Bartlett Dam that have not been answered. We have no seat at the table there because we came in late. We're coming in early here. We will have a seat at the table. What if there's a drought for the next twenty years up at Bartlett Dam? Um, and we don't get any water. There is water under the ground in Harkla, Harkla, Harkla Hala.
Right.
So so anyways, we need to go for this and yes, life is a risk. Life is a gamble. I'm a risk taker and I live on the edge and I'll tell you right now, I'm voting for this.
Do you have another one, Dusty?
Yeah, I just. Harkaway Hala might be the answer or might be one of several answers. Uh, we live in a desert. We need water wherever we can get it. We're going to need water wherever we can get it. I think there's other options on the table, too. Perhaps taking a look at privatizing some of the stuff that we're current doing ourselves, currently doing ourselves. There's a thing called the economy of scale, if you want to go back to Econ one oh one, where you have a company that has a hundred thousand or two hundred thousand customers versus a town that has three or four thousand customers. There's an economy of scale difference there. So I think we need to look at all the options first. I'm not necessarily opposed to Harkaway Hala. I just think that we don't have to make that decision then.
If if we make this decision, we have until January fifteenth to change our minds and pull out of this, correct, Michelle?
Yes, she'll be conducting due diligence until then, and if you find features of the project that don't meet your satisfaction, you can um, back out of the deal before January fifteenth with um, the refund of your earnest money.
Okay, so the town uses ninety five percent of our water, C A P water. We do not know how much they're going to cut back fourteen months from now. Our planning number is twenty five percent, and that yields that we are short of legal obligations of eight hundred and twenty seven acre feet. If they cut back enough uh, more than twenty five, even at twenty five percent, we're going to have to restrict water in town. We're going to have to cut back. This town does not exist without external water. C A P is proven and the flow on the river is proven that we cannot depend solely on water, even though it is um, I forget the term for it, but uh, it comes every year. It's it, Harkaway Hala is a one time. It's mining water. But it's not C A P water. It gives us a diversity of supply. Uh, Joe hit it right on the head. We're not voting tonight to to spend the money. We're voting for time to clear up the uncertainties and it is full of uncertainty. We don't know how much is going to be cut back. We don't know what the prices are. We don't know who's going to deliver it. But we do know that we are the town in the most trouble at at most risk in the C A P system. To not do this is incredibly irresponsible, in my view. It is gambling with the town's future. And I'm not going to gamble with it. It may, there's going to be things we don't know. There are things we don't know and there are going to be surprises along the way. I'll guarantee you that. But uh, I'm I'm very proud of the people who've worked on this and who've exhausted for the last, oh, year and a half. Um, exhausted all the possibilities of additional water. We've been to the governor's office. We've talked to the director of the Department of Water Resources. We've had multiple meetings with Central Arizona Project. We have hired the best consultants we can find, and I think they're world class. Uh, in this area, they're the best ones in my view um, in Arizona. So this is not something that just fell off the wagon. We can get out of this deal in by January fifteenth. If 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 the due diligence that we spend between now and then makes that the most likely thing to happen, I don't think it's going to happen. Because we've been working for a year and a half and have not uncovered any other reliable sources. So if somebody wants to gamble with the future of this town, it doesn't exist without external water. It doesn't exist. So um, this is a, this is a key vote. And I hope everyone considers the many, many mistakes that the town has made in a lot of areas, but in water in particular. This time we got the very best people to work on it with us. And we're we're going to, there's going to be a lot more work. It's not a done deal. This is the start. It's not the finish. So I'm I'm going to vote for this. I'm a homeowner and um, I'm also a water customer. Not everybody in this council is a water customer.
Thank you.
I make a motion, we vote now.
Okay, so that's a good motion, but um, but you're not able to cut the mayor off.
Oh, sorry.
I listened to you, by the way. Um, so all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. opposed?
No.
Okay, we have roll call vote?
Councilmember Augerton?
No.
Councilmember Driscoll?
Yes.
Councilmember Friedman?
Yes.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember Rhodes?
No, it can be delayed.
Vice Mayor Royer?
Yes.
Mayor Morris?
Yes, motion carries five two. Okay, we're on to the next item, which is council discussion, possible approval resolution twenty twenty five dash twenty five for the activation of various general land office patents along the Glory Road alignment between Thirty Second Street and Thirty Eighth Street for public roadway, right of way and public utility purposes.
Good morning, me, good evening, mayor and council. Sorry, it didn't last that long. Uh, yes, uh, tonight we're going to talk about Glory Road. Um, and the activation of some patent reservations that exist along that alignment. Let's see. There we go. So the resolution, uh, the mayor just read. Uh, we have a, we had the resolution that we put together uh, shows the legal descriptions that we would be taking from various parcels um, subject to the patents that have existed since nineteen sixty. Uh, this is the area we're talking about, which is right now only served by Cloud Road. It's the thirty fourth, thirty sixth and thirty eighth street corridor. Uh, Cloud Road turns into Old New River Road, which was cut off um, many years ago by uh, flooding in the in the uh, in Cave Creek Wash. So this is the only, right now Cloud Road is the only way in and out. Uh, over the years, uh, these are the patents that we're looking at. The parcels and then the blue is the patents that would be activated. This is a typical document. I'm sorry for the smallness. You, in your package, you got each of the patents that were provided. Uh, what is highlighted is that um, I guess the federal government didn't trust people when they sold off these five acre parcels in nineteen sixty because they put in this uh, little subject line, this patent is subject to right of way, not exceeding fifty feet in width for roadway and public utility purposes to be located along. Uh, all of them are the north, some are the west, some are the east, depending on which side of the parcel you're on. But they put in the provision that you couldn't block the right of way. Um, when they sold off the parcel. So this always went with the land. Also, it's something that when they did it, uh, until about maybe five or six years ago, it took an act of Congress to get rid of it. And now you can get rid of it a little easier, but it was an act of Congress. Um, just to give you an idea of how, what a patent is. Uh, it was established basically as part of the Small Tracks Act in nineteen thirty eight. It was an act to provide purchase of public lands for homes and other sites. Uh, nineteen forty eight gave the that authority to the Bureau of Land Management to issue the patents to individuals claiming and purchasing the five acre lots from the U S government. The lots conveyed in this area were all conveyed around nineteen sixty. And each patent is subject to the right of way, not exceeding fifty feet in width, as I showed before. Uh, the reasons for the activation of the parcel. So over the recent years, um, the area east of Thirty Second Street and Cloud Road has experienced significant growth. Quite a few new homes have been built in the area. Currently, the only access is from Cloud Road. The residents in the area have approached the town about a second access. I was provided tonight with a petition signed by about twenty of the landowners out in that area who want this to go forward. Uh, with the area bounded by Arizona State lands to the north of Glory Road alignment and to the south, the Cloud Road alignments, the improvement of Glory Road is the on- only way within the that corridor to provide a secondary access. And we're looking at once the right of way is under the town's ownership, because we cannot spend any money until it's under our ownership to improve it by our code and ordinances. Um, the town staff will grade an alignment, install a twenty two foot wide compacted ground recycled asphalt service between Thirty Fourth and Thirty Eighth Street. And the portion of the alignment between Thirty Second Street and Thirty Fourth Street will. And the portion of alignment between Thirty Second Street and Thirty Fourth Street will be formed in the future due to permitting requirements. We have to cross Paradise Wash, and so we'd have to figure out a crossing of that to get a crossing. But it would allow for Thirty Fourth, Thirty Sixth, and Thirty Eighth Street to also access Glory Road. So there'd be a very short piece where Cloud Road would still be the only access. And uh the strategic goals that we're looking at are safe and vibrant community, infrastructure, and best practices. With that, I'll answer any questions that you might have on this matter.
Questions from council.
Yeah, so the light blue is the area you're talking about?
Yes, let me go back to the map. It probably best to have the map. The light blue is the are the areas that we would be activating.
Okay, and eventually you're going to do it to Thirty Second Street, but you're going to have to put some kind of upgrade crossing in?
Right, the crossing, um Paradise Wash in that location is about forty-two hundred cubic feet per second. It's also a FEMA floodplain. So we'd need approval from the Flood Control District of Maricopa County and a little bit of state land that we'd have to cross to finish that.
Have we started talking to them about it?
Uh we have not yet, because until we get an alignment, uh the rest of the alignment, we can relieve any congestion or bypasses that might happen on Cloud.
So this is the first step of seven?
This is the first step of seven.
And the homeowners are agreeable?
Yes, the homeowners are in agreement. Uh like I said, we got about thirty. I was handed a petition, which I was happy to see tonight, about thirty uh signatures on it from homeowners in the area, and there's quite a few here that would like to speak on the matter.
Other questions from council? Cynthia?
Just one, Mayor. Thank you. Do you anticipate this will serve other home builders in the near future? Is there currently growth in that area still?
It's limited. Uh again, um depending on how many lot splits happen in that area. They were for all five-acre parcels, but there have been other but there have been other splits that have occurred over the period of time. And I was just told there are three homes in the neighborhood under construction. Uh Thirty Eighth Street, there has been quite a bit of construction on it. And there will be others along the Thirty Fourth. I know there were some recent home building along Thirty Sixth Street.
Thank you.
Other questions? Seeing none, public comment?
Patrick Hauptman?
Said it correctly. Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen, town council, thanks for letting me speak to you. Make it quick and easy. Everybody likes to have a plan B. Uh this gives residents of Thirty Eight, Thirty Sixth, and Thirty Fourth Street a plan B. Uh since I've lived on Thirty Eighth Street, we've had fires uh north of our location, northeast, and most recently one just on the south side of Cloud Road. Uh so if if we could have a plan B to get us out of there in a worst-case situation, it'd help out a lot. I really appreciate you uh taking a look at this and considering it, and it would uh it would really help us out with having alternatives in the area. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Tracy Bauer? No additional speakers.
Okay, uh we're looking for a motion then?
I'll make it. We're going to get back up here. It's not behaving for me. Hold on. Uh move to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-five to activate right-of-ways reserved uh by the Federal General Land Office patents listed within the resolution.
Second. So who else said that? Oh. Did you say? Uh Cynthia had the second. Dusty, you had the motion.
Safety is important, and giving people a a second way out is an important thing. So I I support it.
Cynthia?
Yes, it looks like a a well-developed plan that will be helpful for the neighborhood.
Other comments? Tom?
Yeah, building a bridge across that wash is is not going to be easy, but it's going to be very important. And approving this tonight gets us the ability to do so, and it gives a possibility for great safety for the gentleman who spoke as well as his neighbors.
Other comments? Yeah, I I I agree. It's it's a no-brainer. So yeah, uh with that, we will we'll have the voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Next on the agenda is council discussion, possible approval of first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero eight in ordinance of the mayor and council of Town of Cave Creek, Maricopa County, Arizona, repeating sections one fifty-one dot zero one Building Code, one fifty-one dot zero two Residential Code, one fifty-one dot oh three Mechanical Code, one fifty-one dot zero four Plumbing Code, one fifty-one dash zero five Electrical Code, one fifty-one dot oh six Fire Code, one fifty-one dot zero eight Fuel Gas Code, one fifty-one dot zero nine Existing Building Code, and one fifty-one dot ten Energy Conservation Code of Chapter one fifty-one of title Roman numeral fifteen of the Town of Cave Creek Code in their entirety and substituting in its place. I have to read all this. I'm I'm half done.
So I only bring it once a decade if we can.
Mayor and council, I promise the motion is just like five words, so it's very easy.
All right, so um in in their entirety and substituting in place in chapter one fifty-one Building Regulations and adopting and making a part of the Cave Creek Town Code that certain document titled twenty twenty-four International Building Code, twenty twenty-four International Residential Code, twenty twenty-four International Plumbing Code, twenty twenty-four International Mechanical Code, twenty twenty-four International Fire Code, twenty twenty-four International Existing Building Code, and twenty twenty-four International Fuel Gas Code, twenty twenty-four International Pool and Spa Code, A one seventeen dot one dash twenty seventeen Standard Accessible and Usable Buildings and Facilities, comma, twenty twenty-three National Electrical Code slash NFPA seventy.
Well done.
Well done, Mayor. The staff has nothing further to report.
I I I think we have to take a break now, so.
Uh Mr. Mayor, allow me to introduce our chief building official and newly minted fire official, uh Adam Hicks. Just celebrated his one-year anniversary with the town, and I'm a little jealous uh because he was able to maneuver a year in the Town of Cave Creek without presenting a council item yet. Uh I recall having to present several items as an intern still. Um so it's kind of unfair, but I'll stop my feet elsewhere. Uh with that, I'll turn it over to uh Chief Building Official Hicks to give you a report um on what we're doing and why. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, Town Council, thank you for affording me the opportunity to come here and present for you today. Uh what we're talking about is currently we have the adopted uh International Code Council's twenty twenty-one version of uh the building codes. We, with several other uh local jurisdictions, are looking to go to the twenty twenty-four just to stay up to date and up to speed. The one thing that I would like to point out is that I have had numerous discussions with my counterparts throughout the valley and the state as a whole. And the overall consensus is that mo- most jurisdictions will be going to the twenty twenty-four if they haven't. Uh what that affords us is an opportunity to uh be on the same playing field as our partners and affording the opportunity for our contractors to come in and work under one general building code as opposed to having to guess what code you're on or designed to a lesser code. Uh there's going to be uh a consensus statewide, basically, that the twenty twenty-four is the uh the code to go to. Um a couple of things about that. Uh like I just stated, the majority of jurisdictions are moving to the twenty twenty-four. I haven't spoken to anybody that hasn't or will not be, as a matter of fact. Uh this move provides us uh the consistency I was just discussing. And uh design and construction with a common code will reduce the plan review times and decrease our uh our called violations on job sites. So it's gonna it's gonna uh give us an ability to uh increase our our timeframes, which I know that our customer base is always concerned about. I hear of jurisdictions that are six months, a year out on a plan review. Uh and part of that is due to inconsistencies of codes. Uh the less number of times we have to send a plan back to have revisions made, the quicker those permits are going to be issued. And then likewise, we should be looking at fewer corrections on job sites during our building inspections. If they're used to building it under the twenty-four in Phoenix and they come up here and build a home, they're going to have be working with the same exact codes they were in Phoenix. Right. So what we've done is over the last year, we've taken our old ordinance uh that was adopted uh for the twenty-one code cycle. We've gone through it. What we did is we basically just cut out all of the uh unnecessary stuff in there that that had been um approved in the twenty-one. Uh what what we did was take it basically to uh a minimum code. So when you're reading the the draft ordinance, what you're going to see is all the things like um we were requiring a an eighteen-inch footing uh where code says we only need a twelve-inch. I couldn't find any justification as to why we were requiring an eighteen-inch footing, so I got rid of it. Uh go back to code minimums. Should make it a lot cheaper to build and a lot easier. Uh so we moved a lot of the arbitrary requirements that were in the existing ordinance. And uh fall back on minimum code. Yeah, so so you part of the problem with with building in Cave Creek has been we had a forty-eight-page ordinance. It's down to twenty, okay? Um minimum code. It's tried, it's tested, it's empirical. Uh there's no reason why we should be adding to it unless we need to, like for fire sprinklers, those have not been removed. Those those will remain. Okay, next one. Don't uh yeah, we can skip it. The only major change that I'm I'm requesting is that chapter eleven and the uh residential code remain at the twenty-one. I don't want to go to the twenty-four. It's far more restrictive. It's far more costly. Uh and you're not going to see um benefits for years and years. Just the insulation costs alone. Uh I don't know if you'll uh reveal the 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 savings in energy for the thirty-year loan of the home. It it just doesn't reveal itself. So I would like to stay on the twenty-one for the chapter eleven Energy Code, and the rest of it will all remain the same. Uh are there any questions?
I have a question. Um, congrats on your one-year anniversary. Like that shirt, you're looking good in your new role. Um people have had some concerns over our sprinkler rules and regs, our fire sprinklers. In fact, Dusty, I think you did at one point.
Yeah, I do.
And maybe you could articulate what those were.
So a couple of things. Um we require, uh I I built a metal barn. Um I was twenty-eight square feet over the amount, and I had to put in a sprinkler system. I ended up spending about twenty thousand dollars because I had to put an industrial sprinkler system because nobody will go in and put a home sprinkler system inside a barn. So it just seems to me that that uh um that when I went through the process, there was absolutely no grace, no mercy, no anything. So now I've got this massive sprinkler system in a metal barn that can't burn. And so I sit and scratch my head going, why do we have the sprinkler system ordinance? When I talked to my insurer, which is USAA for my house, uh they actually prefer now that you don't have sprinkler systems in the house uh because the sprinkler causes more damage than the fire usually. So have we reviewed any of this stuff?
Yes, sir, we have, and I think that you're gonna like the answer. When I read code and I get to the sprinkler section, it says sprinklers are required in dwellings.
Uh yeah, I was told that because my horses are dwelling in the barn, I had to put a damn sprinkler in.
No longer, sir. Staff is staff is in agreement that uh we're no longer going to be requiring sprinklers on marimotels, sheds, storage units.
Oh, no, this is a barn. It's an enclosed barn.
Understood. It's not a dwelling.
One area where I store hay inside of it, and I was told because I store the hay inside, it's considered a dwelling unit. Therefore, I have to put a sprinkler system in.
Not the way I read codes, sir.
Okay, well, I'm just, as I told Luke when I first got in the council, I don't really care what the rules are. I just want them enforced equally.
Understood.
So twenty thousand dollars later, um we're changing the rules, which is a good to hear because he's not the only one who is.
There are a lot of people that have had to do similar kinds of things, and it's it's kind of an unhappy circumstance for all of us.
I would imagine.
And again, this is why this building official has been uh an absolute revelation for the town because our previous iterations of building officials have had or have read code slightly different, and this is it's black and white. The code is really black and white.
As long as it's consistent, I'm happy with it.
Yes, sir.
Uh Tom, I will get you.
Just a quick question. Yes, sir. Um and I just wanted to bounce off of Catherine. Um water heaters requiring a building permit? Correct. Is that something that we still need? For code. Okay, and what's the justification or the explanation for that? Water heater. A water heater is the most dangerous piece of equipment in a home, causes the most damage nationally. Electric? As well as gas? Water, water itself. Oh, okay. Yeah, yeah, so uh and and believe it or not, it's one of uh the most common violations at installation that we'll 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 find that they're being installed improperly. Like when I got here, I haven't seen very many expansion tanks on water heaters. Water, uh an expansion tank's mandatory on a water heater unless you're on your own private well. Uh and it is one of the things that keeps your water heater from going boom, right? But we don't see them installed very often, and that needs to change. And the only way to make sure that that happens is with regulation oversight.
Cynthia?
Thank you. Um by retaining chapter eleven in the energy segment, the twenty twenty-one guidelines, did that address the questions that uh Mr. Ashley raised from the Home Builders Association?
Does it address it? No, it's 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 counter to it.
Okay. And you feel like that issue's been uh fairly reviewed?
I have. I have gone through the energy code. Uh I know Mr. Ashley cited a cost savings by going to the twenty-four, but I don't agree.
Thank you.
Have have you met with him?
Yes, I have.
Oh.
Tom?
I thank the mayor for that extensive speech that you made in talking about this particular motion, but I have a question for council. Would the the approval of this just require someone to say that they're in favor of approval of the first reading of ordinance number two oh two five dash oh eight?
Yes. I want to get home.
We talk too much, anyway.
Questions to listen?
Another quick question?
Yeah, sure.
Um in the line-out uh item or uh draft, uh it says effective date July first of twenty twenty-five. Does that mean this ordinance will be retroactive, or is that going to go to January of twenty-six?
So, yes, so um part of what we'll bring back to you for second reading at the next council meeting will be um an option for either a ninety-day effective period, a hundred and eighty-day perfect or uh date of effective, or if we if you want to say January first, twenty twenty-six, or or specify a date certain. Um this has been something that Adam's been working on really since he got here and hit the ground running. Uh we were hoping to bring it to you before the summer break. Uh we just couldn't make the timing work, so. Yeah, that that will be up to council, and we'll bring you some options to decide when you want an effective date by.
Thank you.
Great. And just so you're all aware, I my desire would be for this code to run for six consecutive years, and then we would adopt the twenty thirty. Um staying up to speed on codes is very important for our ISO rating. Uh and I'm very conscious of that. This is going to ensure that uh we don't take any hits on our private insurance and and such due to uh a lapse in code cycles.
Okay, other questions? Okay, seeing none, public comment?
James Ashley?
Thank you very much, Mayor, members of the council. I am James Ashley with the Home Builders Association of Central Arizona. We represent the single-family residential construction industry. Since nineteen fifty-one, the association has represented that here in Arizona. Want to I want to thank you for this opportunity. There was a lot to unpack in the the letter that I sent this morning. I know. I know it's not optimal to have to send a letter the day of a council meeting, but unfortunately, that's the circumstance that we found ourselves in with identifying this on the agenda. I outlined in the letter our interaction and communication and the timeline with staff following an initial conversation with Adam on August 7th, for which I do appreciate Adam's inquiry to our office that led to that initial conversation. While we do have many important and common sense amendments to the 2024 building codes, which we'd like to see fully considered, such as addressing the issues of variable speed HVAC motors that could trip air conditioners and then resulting in a life, health and safety issue, especially in the summertime, to new restrictions on kitchen islands and our amendment to address that as well. In terms of items that buyers do not want, like the kitchen island requirement, I'm here tonight, though, for a pressing issue related to singling out single family residential construction from the update to the 2024 International Energy Conservation Code and the proposal for an unamended 2021 version. As I noted in the letter this morning, the 2024 energy codes are less burdensome. They're less regulatory and less expensive than the 2021 codes. And this is something that we are hearing unanimously from national organizations, the National Association of Home Builders, Innovation Research Labs, which is a national entity that studies these costs. And based on that, it was the town's previous amendments three years ago in 20 for the 2021 adoption that actually addressed those issues. If the town does decide to stay on the 2021 Energy Code for single family construction, we ask you to maintain consistency with the previous March 7th, 2022 unanimous adoption by the town council of the amended 2021 IECC, which is a less regulatory version of the 2021 Energy Code. That's what the builder community is familiar with, supported those amendments in the last update. And that's what they're currently using. The Home Builders Association and the builder community, they appreciated the support from Mayor Morris, Vice Mayor Royer and Councilmember McGuire, being joined by your colleagues at the time, three years ago, in voting unanimously for those amendments. And this could be accomplished on page 12, paragraph 5, by adding as amended by Cave Creek Ordinance 02022-01. And to avoid legal inconsistency, the 2024 Energy Code would also need to reference that the residential section for single family construction is amended out, so there is not a code conflict between the two. And in terms of the 2024 code, it is correct. The vast majority, with a couple of exceptions of jurisdictions in Maricopa County and Pinal County are on the 2018 code and they're moving to the 24. They all decided to skip the 2021 code for numerous reasons. There are a couple of jurisdictions that were on the 2021. One has already moved to the 2024. And with the town of Cave Creek moving to the 2024, the other option, as opposed to that amendment, is adopt 2024 across the board. Don't single out single family residential for the 2021 code, which is very burdensome and regulatory, more so than the 24. Just move to the 24 across the board. Now, I will say, as I was driving here this evening, I did receive an email from Development Services Director Luke Couchman. I do appreciate that outreach and I look forward to another conversation with staff coming up next week. And hopefully we'll be able to resolve this. And I want to thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Well, do you have any questions for Mr. Ashley? Tom?
Yeah, this is for Mr. Hicks. Mr. Hicks, in light of what we have just heard, do you still feel that we should go to the 2025-08 codes?
The 24 codes?
24. Well, the ordinance, ordinance number, yes, okay.
Okay, and you're referring specifically to the Energy Code?
I'm referring to the whole motion that we have tonight. You feel that that is in, still you recommend that?
I would recommend that we go to the 2024 code cycle.
Okay.
And I would also recommend that we do not adopt the Energy Code out of the 24 cycle, but remain on the 21. That's also the stance of the majority of jurisdictions in the valley. The 2024 Energy Code is being written out.
And it's the nature of this proposal that we have in front of us. Thank you.
And why is it, why are you standing on the 2021? I guess I missed the.
There is a large increase in cost and you won't see the benefits of the increase of cost, particularly in the areas of insulation, which is measured on a bell curve. You start throwing more money, more product at a home and you don't realize the benefits of it.
Okay, so it's a cost benefit analysis. It's not there in the 2024 code that you think is in the 2021 code?
Correct.
He does not agree.
Yes, Mayor, if I may, I would have to disagree. The 2024 IECC rolls back ceiling insulation requirements to align with the 2018 IECC levels because universally, the 2021 went a step too far and that is why so much was reversed in the 2024 version versus the 2021. It reduced those ceiling insulation R values from R49 to R38 in our climate zone, climate zone two. In terms of another example, insulation for ducts and conditioned spaces was reduced from R19 to R10. Those are just a couple of examples. There are many more and universally, and I am, I've been tracking and working with jurisdictions for the last six to nine months that are updating to the 2024 codes. No one has who's already adopted or has a draft pending right now that'll be approved in the next week or a couple of months. Nobody has stayed with the 21 code for energy. And Adam, if you have a specific jurisdiction in Maricopa County or Pinal County that have done that, I'd like to know.
Most were on the 18, not the 21.
Correct, they were on the 18 and they're moving to the 24. In other words, they're skipping the 21. Nobody is on, nobody is staying on the 21 that is moving to the 24, if that makes sense.
I'd be happy to go to the 18.
I think that would be a step backward for the town and we support the concept of updating to the 2024 codes and doing it consistently across the board so you don't have inconsistency between one industry and one aspect of single family construction and every other aspect and everything else being built in the town and other industries.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, members of council, we'll continue this discussion and have a more formal basis for that 2021 versus 2024 and some examples and how that actually affects construction in the town for you at the second reading.
Or if it's an improvement and that we should reconsider.
Okay, yep, absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I mean, we pay our staff to make these decisions and I know I'm not an expert in this area. So I would just like to, if there is a compromise or something that can be made fine, if not, then, yeah, I'll make the motion myself, so.
Tracy Bauer?
I'm sorry.
No additional speakers.
That's it. Okay, we're ready for a motion. Cynthia?
Move approval of the first reading of ordinance number 2025-08.
Second. Cynthia?
First reading, I think we're starting to understand the details involved and we'll look forward to additional information moving this forward.
I've had a lot of experience in my professional life dealing with codes and there are a lot of the fastest way for a builder to sell more insulation is to get somebody to write a code that says you gotta add another six inches or and it goes, it's that way in all the national organizations that I've ever been associated or been regulated by. So it may not be perfect, but I think there is, in the whole, it being consistent with other home builders and cities in the area is, is a real key. But I'm going to vote for this and you can, you guys can work with the home builders to see if there's something better that we can bring it back. Other comments? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carries 7-0.
Thank you for your time.
Number three is council discussion, possible approval of for case Z-24-01, Gammage and Burnham. Zone change request, first reading of ordinance 2025-12.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Senior Planner Stephen Peralos is going to be presenting the next two items on the agenda.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Staff is here tonight to present the the zone change requests that's applied for by Gammage and Burnham. It's also first reading of ordinance 2025-12. The applicant is Gammage and Burnham on behalf of SC Fullerton LLC. The parcels associated with the zone change request are parcels 201-47-089B and 211-47-089C. The location is one parcel deep at the northwest corner of Carefree Highway and 51st Street and is within the Carefree Highway Specific Area Plan. So this is the location of the parcels with the vicinity map showing that it's the location of one parcel deep at the northwest corner of Carefree Highway and 51st Street. The zone change request is to change the underlying zoning district or underlying zoning and amend the town of Cave Creek zoning map for parcel 211-47-089B and 211-47-089C from Desert Row 89, DR 89, the commercial buffer. The parcel is within the specific area plan and consists of a commercial land use designation per the 2021 general plan. As you see on the map provided on the screen, there, it's identifying the surrounding land uses. North to the property is residential development. East is the vacant property previously zoned DR 89, but rezoned to commercial buffer in 2022 under ordinance number 02022-08. The east parcel is also located within the specific area plan. Further east is the commercial development located within the town of Cave Creek limits. The property to the south is a commercial development center located within the city of Phoenix's jurisdiction. The property to the west consists of a vacant church, which is zoned commercial buffer under ordinance number 2014-05. And further west is commercial development within the town of Cave Creek limits consisting of a Verizon and Harbor Freight. The property is also zoned commercial buffer and that was rezoned under ordinance 2021-01. The applicant has submitted a site planner review application concurrently with their rezone application and will be presented on this agenda. On the same agenda. This case is solely to focus on the consideration of the rezone change request to amend the zoning map and change the underlying zoning district from parcels, four parcels, 211-47-089B and 211-47-089C from Desert Row 89 to commercial buffer. So on the slide, the public facilities and infrastructures conformity, the town of Cave Creek Utilities Department and Engineering Department have reviewed the project for compliance. The applicant has satisfied the minimum requirements for the rezone case. A water and wastewater design report were reviewed for this application based off the water design report. The intended users demonstrated low water usage. Staff will be able to go into further detail regarding this matter on the site plan review case, which follows as the next agenda item, if town council approves this rezone case. Staff cannot go much in detail regarding the proposed development since this is for a rezone case. However, staff can comment that the water design report was reviewed for compliance by the utilities director and demonstrated low water demand and satisfied town code. At the planning commission meeting held on September 18th, 2025, the town of Cave Creek Planning Commission voted 6 to 0 to recommend approval of the zone change application case Z-24-01. Case, case number Z-2401 conforms with the requirements outlined in the zone change application and is consistent with the general plan. Sorry, the strategic plan and then the Carefree Highway Specific Area Plan. Again, this case is solely for a zone change request of whether the proposed commercial buffer zone is appropriate for this location. At this moment, Mayor, members of council, are there any questions for staff? If not, the applicant is here to answer any questions.
Tom?
Thank you for coming in and supporting Luke. Luke needs your help. Don't wait all.
Thank you, Councilmember McGuire.
The approval of this, would that affect the water use for the lot?
The approval of this would not affect the water use they've satisfied based off the rezone. Given a scenario, if we use this user, it would satisfy the requirements of the water. It would meet the town code with the water as utility director approved it. I apologize.
Thank you.
Questions for this side?
The applicant held a neighborhood meeting. And how did that go? How many people were there? What were their questions or concerns?
I believe the sign in sheet revealed nine people from the public signed in. That should all be included. For the record, the applicant is here. Staff doesn't attend those meetings. Then, you know, further, a comment was made earlier about the council chambers being used for neighborhood meetings. The town used to not have a policy about where a neighborhood meeting was held. There were some zone change cases and general plan amendment cases where a public meeting was held at the Buffalo Chip on Thursday night. And that wasn't well received by the people that wanted to go there and learn more about a product or a case. There was also another instance where a meeting, a neighborhood meeting was held outside of the town at the Holland Center. And there was a lot of feedback that people didn't think it was right to have to leave the town to go somewhere else to listen about a town matter. So since then, really, it's been our policy. Really, the only games in town for a nice meeting space are the library or the council chambers. So if the council chambers are available, we extend that to, because it is a state mandated step that they hold a neighborhood meeting ahead of planning commission action, that we allow council chambers to be utilized for that. If there were better meeting spaces and everything, we would definitely explore those as well, but it's always been our practice to allow the use of our council chambers if it's available. But yeah, the applicant is here and can probably allude better to what was brought up at the meeting, what the concerns were and what the actions that the applicant has taken to remediate any of those concerns or issues.
I'd like to hear that.
Yes. It's a good segue, Mr. Anderson?
Mayor, members of council, good evening. Stephen Anderson, 40 North Central, 20th floor in Phoenix, on behalf of the applicant, SC Fullerton. I'm a land use attorney with Gammage and Burnham and I'm joined by Michelle Santoro as a land use planner at our office. As Mr. Peralos indicated, this is the rezone. The site plan is coming up as a separate item on your agenda and I'm prepared to make a detailed presentation on that item. The rezoning will simply bring this property into conformance with the specific area plan by changing the zoning of the eastern half of the property from the residential low density categorization that it has today to the commercial buffer category. So I was planning on delaying the detailed part of my presentation until item four on your agenda. However, I can address the community meeting. We did have a community meeting. It did have nine folks in attendance at the community meeting. We really covered the gamut of the entire details of the project, everything. We talked about site plan. We talked about hours of operation, which is a requirement or feature of the specific area plan. We talked about the rezone as well. We talked about commercial development opportunities along Carefree Highway, not only in the town of Cave Creek, but in the other three jurisdictions that share the highway. We had residents or property owners of immediately adjacent property to as far as a quarter mile away in terms of the gamut of folks that we had. So we did, in fact, have one of our immediately adjacent next door neighbors at the meeting. So I thought it was a very well rounded discussion that, as I said, did cover a variety of topics.
Did they walk away pleased or satisfied?
Well, I bet some of them are here behind me. So we thought that the meeting went generally well. I've certainly been to meetings that did not go well. This did not have those characteristics to me. But I obviously don't want to put, you know, speak for the folks who have come here tonight to share their comments with you.
Very good. Thank you.
Other questions?
I'll win.
Okay. Seeing none, I guess there's public comment on this.
Julie Goldammer? Mayor and town council, I do live in that neighborhood and I did not attend that meeting because I couldn't. It was the beginning of August, so just FYI. These tend to happen when we're down to like one meeting a month with council because a lot of people leave in the summertime and we aren't home and there's probably about 30% of our neighborhood that are snowbirds, so it's hard sometimes to attend. But I was very pleased with the time that I spent on the phone with Michelle Santoro. the phone with Michelle Santoro. So I do want to thank her for that. I have concerns and this is probably a little premature. I always get my zoning and my my special plan stuff. You know, he helps me. Anyway, my big concern right now is the rezoning again. I know SAP is there. We have to do it. I know it's good for the town because we have revenue generation sources. My biggest concern right now, and I was told that they would not tell us what the different people or the anchors or the businesses that would be in there. This is just a generic retail restaurant rezone again, yet again. I think that's very detrimental potentially to the other businesses that are around. There's been huge rumors that this is another grocery store. I I've been taught by somebody who I very much respect that an overlay is something we probably want to consider. The benefits of studying how we rezon these SAP parcels is pretty critical. I feel like we are going to continue to poach the same pay grade workforce from all of the other businesses, both in the town core as well as down on the SAP there. This is the same pay structure that we're going to go after if we're dealing yet again with a grocery type usage. We're going to add to the traffic woes. If you have any problems, come with me and try to turn left at the end of 52nd Street onto Carefree Highway. You can't. It takes several minutes. Why should we continue to distill all of the businesses that are successfully operating both in the town core and along the Carefree SAP lots already? There are other options, dry goods, electronics and other items. If you look, you just have to look. Any kind of grocery usage, even if they provided some sort of very special, we're not going to use a lot. Grocery usage because of refrigeration, fresh produce, seafood and other safety reasons, grocery stores is a big water user. They might have put in some sort of special, this is all we're going to use, but I have very big concerns about that. So I think we are needing to maybe postpone this and talk about potentially maybe for second reading, putting some sort of an overlay on this property because we don't want this to turn into a commercial buffer that any old thing that can come back in here and bite us in the butt, especially with the water usage. Thank you.
Thank you.
No additional speakers.
We are ready. Any further comments from Stan?
Not at this time, Mayor.
Okay. Ready for a motion? I will make it. I move to approve first reading of ordinance 2025-12 related to case Z-24-01, a rezoning request to change the underlying zoning of two parcels totaling approximately two acres from a current zoning of Desert Row Residential DR 89 to Commercial Buffer CB Zone.
Second.
I believe the vice mayor had the second, the first second.
Well, I think that we've come quite far in the process for us to stop and reconsider other options for this property. There was plenty of public notification and I think that Gamage and Burnham did their due diligence. Neighbors were there. Their voices were heard. I appreciate your concerns. I think that there could be work done in the future to perhaps meet your expectations, but right now I'm in favor.
Yeah, I guess mine is I understand the desire to see exactly what's going in there, but this is a building issue, not a economic issue of whether people have built or overbuilt one particular type of that's gone up the free enterprise system to weed that one out. So other comments? Cynthia?
I would just comment that the proposal, the rezoning is consistent with the Carefree Highway Special Area Plan. We are approaching full capacity in that area as more of the properties are built up and have had good success with attracting businesses that have been a benefit to the town, both in terms of an economic engine as well as services to residents.
Are there any other comments to this side? Comments down here?
Yeah. I don't think we can control who the tenants are. I think all we can control is whether it gets built or not. So I agree with you. However, state law is kind of state law and we're bound to it.
Anybody else? Okay. So with that, I think we are ready for a vote. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Five, six and seven.
Item four. Excuse me.
Site plan review. If we took five, six and seven first, would that make? If we took five, Luke, we took five, six and seven first, does that make number four moot? I'm looking at the order here and state law says we can't do this. Why are we discussing this?
Correct. This it would not because there is an effective period by which these ordinances have to, they have to obtain second reading and then there's a 30 day effective period. So if the items five, six and seven remain on course, these requirements won't adjust until December 4th. So anything in the hopper now that we're processing, this essentially this would be the last site plan considered by council.
Okay. Okay.
In a, in a nice way.
That's the discussion, possible approval of case number SPR-24-01, Gamage and Burnham, site plan review for the development of a retail and restaurant commercial center located north of Carefree Highway between 50th and 51st Street.
Good evening, Mayor. I thought you were trying to get rid of me pretty quickly. so staffs here tonight present the the site plan review case submitted by Gamage and Burnham concurrently with their rezone application. Site plan review case application is SPR-24-01, known as a Cave Free Gateway. Applicant is Gamage and Burnham. The parcels are two associated with the project are 211-47-040B, 211-47-089B and 211-47-089C. The location is one parcel deep north of Carefree Highway between 50th and 51st Street and is within the Carefree Highway specific area plan. The request is to consider approval for case number SPR-24-01, Cave Free Gateway, site plan review for a commercial development for a retail and restaurant commercial center. so at this moment, the current zoning for parcel 211-47-040B is commercial buffer, which was rezoned in 2021 under ordinance oh 2021-02. The current zoning for 211-47-089B and 211-47-089C, it is DR 89, Desert Row 89. The request of commercial buffer zoning is subject to KC-24-01, which we just heard in the last case. The surrounding zoning for around the properties, we have commercial buffer to the east and west, Desert Row 89 to the north and to the south is the city of Phoenix jurisdiction. So as we have the surrounding land uses, as depicted in the last case, we have the to the north, we have residential development to the east vacant property previously zoned DR 89 but rezoned to commercial buffer in 2022 under ordinance number oh 2022-08. These parcels also located within the specific area plan. It's going off the the land use. So sorry, Luke, I'm sorry. To further east is the commercial development located within town of Cave Creek limits. The property to south is a commercial development center located within the city of Phoenix jurisdiction. The property to west consists of vacant church which is own commercial buffer. That was done under ordinance number 2014-05. And further west is a commercial development within town of Cave Creek limits consisting of Verizon Harbor Freight. The property is also zoned commercial buffer, which was done under ordinance 2021-01. So what we have is a project description. The proposed site plan depicts a commercial development of retail and restaurant commercial center with associated ingress, egress and parking area also with pedestrian pathway connection and location of the proposed structures depicted on the site plan on the screen. So on this slide, you'll see that the is in conformance with the proposed uses, the permitted uses. allowable uses within the Carefree Area Specific Area Plan requires zoning to allow for commercial buffer zoning between 48th and 53rd Streets, one parcel deep. The uses within the Carefree Highway Specific Area Plan state that there shall be no drive through uses for fast food restaurants where the primary business is the sale of quick food service and further restrict the hours of operation to be limited to 6:00 AM to 11:00 PM. The proposed uses from the applicant are for retail sales and restaurant. The uses are compliant with the town of Cave Creek zoning ordinance and Carefree Highway Specific Area Plan.
So just to, just real quick to interject on that, a comment was made by a, by an audience member at the last agenda item about an overlay. This actually is an overlay. Carefree Highway, the SAP in and of itself is an overlay district as it has reduced building height maximum. It's only 22 feet from natural grade to the top of the roof liner structure. As you all recall, maximum height in the town of Cave Creek is 25 feet measured from natural grade to the top of the roof liner peak. So this has a further reduced building height allowance. It also has enhanced setbacks. So the building setbacks in this commercial buffer zone as opposed to any other commercial buffer zone or any other commercial zone in general are much more restrictive. And that's another example. The maximum allowed lot coverage is also greatly reduced in this area as it is in other commercial zones. So all of those things were, and then the uses are also limited, further limited in this zone, in this specific area plan as they are in other commercial zones. So this is effectively an overlay district already. So I'll let Stephen continue with this presentation.
Thank you. So will be presented further on is the bulk regulations such as building height, landscaping, parking and outdoor lighting, et cetera. Just more to bulk regulations that demonstrate compliance and how this project is brought to you today. So on this one, we have the building height depicting through an engineered cross section depicting that'll be 22 feet in height from the top of the roof line. And they're also allowed in additional five feet in height from the top of the roof for architectural enhancements. And in this case, they'll be extending parapits for screening purposes of mechanical the mechanical equipment on the top. In this slide here, you'll see that there is a, this depicts the setbacks in the lot coverage. So as you see here, highlighted in here is the setback requirements and that you see that the buildings do not encroach beyond the building setback requirements. Also is a table which depicts the lot coverage and this shows that they are not exceeding the lot coverage requirement, which again is the zoning ordinance for commercial buffer is 60%, but in the commercial, the Carefree Highway Specific Area Plan is 18%. They depict that they are at 17.2%. For the landscaper requirement, they're, they're required to meet a minimum of 15% landscaping. They're proposing 26.2% landscaping. As far as undisturbed, they're required a 20% undisturbed requirement. The proposed undisturbed is 0%. The reasoning why is because the undisturbed requirement of 20% transferred to hillside property. Property through transfer development rights approved by town council through resolution If any questions about the landscaping, that they're all going to be native plants and low water use, so they would not need to be well watered as much as they're adapted to the native desert. with the parking requirements, they're demonstrating that they are in compliance with that. They show that the total parking requirements are 123 parking spaces that they're to provide and they're providing 140 parking spaces. Along with that is that when they're over 10% of the parking requirement, so they also be required to park or to implement one tree per five parking spaces. So this would be a, that they've satisfied that requirement with the landscape plan as well. In this slide here, you'll see that they provided a photometric study which depicts that there is no light trespass beyond the property lines. This demonstrated compliance with, with the outdoor lighting regulations. So the public facilities and infrastructure conformity and town of Cave Creek Utilities Department and Engineering Department, they reviewed the project for compliance. The applicant has satisfied the minimum requirements for a site plan review case. On-site and off-site infrastructure plans will be required at permitting stage. A water and wastewater design report is reviewed for this application will also be required to be submitted at the permitting stages. Based off the water design report, the intended users demonstrate low water usage during building permit review, a permit will not be issued to construct until the development meets all town code and ordinances such as water, sewer, infrastructure, transportation, building and fire safety and zoning. The project demonstrates compliance with the general plan, strategic plan and the Carefree Highway Specific Area Plan. At the, at the planning commission meeting held on September 18th, the, the planning commission voted unanimously to approve recommendation of approval for this case. At this moment in time, Mayor and Members of Council, are there any questions for staff? The applicant is here to also present a slideshow and answer any questions as well.
I have one question. I assume both of these cases were reviewed by the plan commission?
That is correct, Vice Mayor.
Could you tell me what their vote was?
Six nothing. I apologize if I read that very quickly. It was a, the vote was six zero approval, consider recommendation approval.
Okay. On both?
Correct. On both cases. I apologize.
Sorry, I didn't hear you say.
No, I apologize.
That's all right.
There was a letter in there about the, the cut-throughs, traffic cut-throughs and some kind of mitigation for those, which is especially interesting right now. And El Cindero has had those complaints in the past, although that's a very torturous way to get through a cut-through. And the, and it's even worse on the south side of the road that because you can cut the angle off of Carefree Highway and Cave Creek Road intersection. Do we have any plans to mitigate the cut-throughs?
At this time, Mayor, no, this is something that, that we actually looked at extensively when the specific area plan was going through its, you know, formulation in the 2010, 12 timeline. But it's something that the town engineer is always looking at on both sides of Carefree Highway and, and that area. I grew up on 50th Street. So I'm, I'm very well aware of how to go down to New River and out to, you know, it's so that's, it's kind of a local trade secret that people will continue to discover and I don't know how there's really much to, that the town can do to discourage the use. I mean, they're for the most part dirt roads. So
Yeah, we don't want a lot of traffic on dirt roads, you know, through traffic.
Right.
That's reserved for residential, I would think. Could you refresh us on the density transfer? Is there a density transfer to this? Where, where is the transfer location?
Luke and Stephen and I am going to touch on that.
Yes. So the applicant
Okay.
touched base on that. Mayor Morris?
Go ahead.
Mayor, Members of Council, again, Stephen Anderson, 40 North Central and 20th floor in Phoenix, here on behalf of SC Fullerton. Do you have our presentation?
There it is.
There's that. If it works, if it works.
You have to cross your fingers with one hand and
So again, we represent SC Fullerton, which owns the subject property and we are happy to be here this evening, as was just mentioned by staff and responsible vice mayor. We're here with recommendations for approval from your staff and unanimous recommendations from your planning commission on both our rezoning and our site plan applications. I should note that our site plan application is subject to 20 recommended conditions from both the staff and the planning commission and we are in a full agreement with all 20 of those conditions. This is the site and normally I like to introduce a rezoning case or a site plan by talking about the property. This is the site, and normally I like to introduce a rezoning case or a site plan by talking about the property in question. Again, the property that we're here to talk about is five acres of land located on the north side of Carefree Highway between Fiftieth and Fifty-first Streets. However, this case is a little bit different because you all already know about this case and this property, because we talked about it in June when we were here before you with our TDR agreement to facilitate the project. That is the TDR itself, and here is a map of the sending property. So to remind you, under the TDR agreement, SC Fullerton acquired a piece of land in the central part of the town. That land is on a list of property that was pre-identified by the town. I think that was a question earlier during the public comment section. So we didn't pick this property at random. You all actually picked the properties for us, then we go acquire what we can, if we can. As you can see from the aerial photographs, the property is located south of the intersection of Linda Drive and Skyline Drive. And what will happen is if you all ultimately see fit to approve the rezoning and site plan, SC Fullerton will then preserve the eastern thirty-four thousand square feet of that larger property in perpetuity. We don't get any additional rights on the remaining balance of the property. By the way, it retains its DR one eighty-nine, or DR eighty-nine zoning. So nothing happens to the balance of the property. But in exchange for preserving the thirty-four thousand square feet in perpetuity, we do get the right to mass grade the site along Carefree Highway at the time of development. Of course, we didn't then have to re-landscape the site, which we would do using a mix of whatever we can retain from the site through a nursery and landscape salvage, and then additional landscaping to supplement to replace what we lose in the grading process. At the moment, the TDR is conditional. And so the only property that is, is at risk at the moment regarding this project is us, SC Fullerton. We've already bought the land, but if you all don't approve the rezoning, the TDR does not go through. At the TDR hearing in June, several of you talked about the Carefree Highway Specific Area Plan, which as Luke just noted to you, stealing my thunder, is an overlay plan that you all adopted back in twenty twenty. And the Town of Cave Creek adopted this Carefree Plan governing all of the property that is on the north side of Carefree Highway indicated there on the map in the red and white matched area. The plan basically does two things. First of all, it calls for all the land to be zoned, commercial buffers, we talked about on the prior agenda item. And second, it sets a range of design standards. This is the overlay part that Luke talked about, that these projects are supposed to meet, that is supposed to keep the projects appropriately sized so that they respect the existing residential properties inside the town. And in addition to, it should be noted, as Luke already explained, that the overlay also limits some of the land uses within the ability of the town to do so. The specific one of interest that was mentioned in the staff presentation is the limitation on drive-through restaurants. They're not allowed under the specific area plan, and they're non-proposed with this project. So when SC Fullerton bought this property, we did so knowing about the plan and these limitations. And we knew about with the Cave Creek Gateway proposal, that's what we call the project, that we're going to stay within the limitations of the plan. The staff report confirms that we do that. We have met all of the standards that are set forth in the specific plan, and we are requesting no deviations from the plan. The Vice Mayor asked me before about the community meeting. I hadn't heard before who was here in the audience, so I didn't want to say too much, but now I've observed, no one is here of the nine people who attended, and that means telling to you that we did address all of those questions at that meeting, and we did in fact confirm that we're in compliance with all of the standards that are set forth in the specific plan, or in the specific area plan. So we touched briefly on the zoning, just a straight rezon of CB to bring us into conformance with the specific area plan noting that the western half of the site is already zoned CB and is in conformance. We did have one speaker, I should note, at the planning commission hearing, a gentleman named David Smith, and he spoke in favor of the project because of its compliance with the specific area plan. That was the sole speaker at the commission hearing last month. Staff has already provided you with a written and verbal report that walks you through our compliance with the specific area plan in detail. I am prepared to do the same if you would like me to do so, and I did so at the planning commission. However, because Mr. Sims wants to go home, I will. I'm sure you all would like to hear about it, so just let me know, and I can do that. I did want to conclude by saying that the town adopted the specific area plan to encourage and manage commercial opportunities along the Carefree Highway. The highway is obviously a heavily trafficked street today, so it's no longer appropriate certainly for the residential zoning that this, that some of this property still has, the DR eighty-nine. And the Carefree Highway and Cave Creek Road are where four different jurisdictions come together in what is a very complicated jigsaw puzzle. For example, we've got a Home Depot sitting across the street from us in the city of Phoenix. These four jurisdictions don't just meet here, they are also competing here for a vital sales tax dollars that powers public services in all four of the communities that meet at this intersection. We are seeking your approval this evening in no small part because we are right in the middle of that competitive environment. That is why we did propose a plan that complies completely with the specific area plan and seeks no deviations from its requirements. That has secured us so far a staff recommendation for approval and unanimous planning commission recommendation for approval. It's also why we took the risk to buy the preserved land inside the town and secured your approval for the TDR. Hopefully, this is the last step where we can secure your approval for our, for our rezoning and for our site plan, and that will allow us another advantage in the very aggressive economic competition that continues out along the Carefree Highway. We appreciate the opportunity to speak with you this evening, and we would be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for the applicant?
No.
Seeing none? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else from staff?
No, sir.
I guess we have.
I have none.
We have no, no comments? Okay, so we're ready for, for a motion then?
I'll move.
Okay.
Move to approve case number SPR twenty-four dash oh one, Cave Creek Gateway, Site Plan Review for a new commercial development.
Second.
Okay. So you had the, you get the comments, you have the motion.
Yes, I, I thought the presentation was well detailed in our packet, including the, the site plan elevations and details on the landscaping and parking. So the questions I had about the site plan were well addressed. I think it is a, a good addition in the special area plan that adds to the economic engine for Cave Creek. And it is our last site plan review by all measures.
Huzzah.
Yes.
Did it. I completely agree with Councilmember Driscoll.
Thank you.
Other comments? Seeing none. All those in favor?
I.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. We are on to the part of the.
Can we take a five-minute break?
Sure.
A long time.
We'll reconvene at seven thirty.
Five minutes.
Um. Do we need to take these five all at once? Can we compress?
I have one presentation outline offer. Yeah.
You're like thinking like me.
No, I have a one year old daughter I gotta get home to.
There you go.
Not your fill.
All right, go.
Okay. So agenda item number five, uh, once I get the presentation up is the amendments to zoning ordinance. Item number six is the amendments to the subdivision ordinance and item number seven is the amendments to the town code. All three are related to one House Bill twenty-four forty-seven. So this House Bill was approved by the governor back in March of this year. And what it did is it struck the word may in state statute and replaced it with shall. So now reads that municipality shall authorize administrative personnel to review and approve site plans, land divisions, lot line adjustments, preliminary plots, final plots and plot amendments without a public hearing. And it has additional language in that bill that now requires municipalities to allow at-risk grading and drainage submittals and expedited permit review for applicants who have demonstrated a history of compliance. But our ordinance or our amendments tonight are related to that top bullet point regarding site plans, lot splits and plots. So going over some of the implications of House Bill twenty-four forty-seven, our ordinance updates are required by the end of this year. And Mayor, I know you mentioned earlier, um, so that was probably our last site plan because two weeks from now will be the second reading should council approve it and it'll have a thirty day effective period, which would have this in place, uh, that would be December fourth of this year. And the impacted processes, first, it's our site plan review process and our zoning ordinance. Second, it's our plating process and our subdivision ordinance and third is lots bits of less than two and a half acres, which is in our town code. And this does have a greater impact on the town of Cave Creek compared to other municipalities due to our current procedures. I'll outline that here on the next slide. So if you look on the left-hand side, uh, we took a sample of twelve municipalities throughout the state varying in size and region uh, to get a glimpse of how the state is overall reviewing site plans and preliminary plots currently. And if you look at the site plan review, um, eleven of the twelve that we sampled are already doing it at the administrative level. Where if you look at the preliminary plat portion, the larger municipalities have already adopted their amendments to do it administratively in previous years. Whereas the smaller municipalities like us still do preliminary plots through the public hearing process. Um, but all those boxes that are checked public hearing, uh, those municipalities are in the process of amending their ordinance like us currently. So I know we had economics one-on-one earlier. This slides a little bit of planning and zoning one-on-one. Uh, site plan review is the process that entitles new commercial and multifamily development where the zoning permits that particular use. So with that being said, site plan reviews are a non-discretionary process based on objective criteria which are established within our zoning ordinance. And they're not intended to evaluate the use or design of the project. Um, rather zoning ordinance section three point five is what dictates the spot, the process for specific uses given its zoning district. So we have a little glimpse of the section three point five on the right side and those uses that have an S next, uh, uh, their use description in its zoning. So those are the uses that are allowed by right or are permitted uses and those are the uses that follow the site plan interview process. Uh, whereas the uses that have an SU are the special uses where councils still have full discretion to approve or deny those specific uses in that given zoning district. And then the uses that have a dash next to it are those uses that are explicitly prohibited in that zoning district. So moving forward, uh, this shows our application types, which are administrative and which are legislative. On the left-hand side, we have our applications with objective criteria where if these applications meet these objective criteria, we as staff have to approve these applications. So that's our site plan reviews, our plats and our lot splits. And then on the right-hand side, you have your discretionary applications. These are the legislative applications that still will require council approval. So that's our special uses, rezones, general plan amendments and text amendments. So the current process for a site plan review application is a six-step process here in Cave Creek. Firstly, I have to go through a pre-application conference. That's a meeting with planning and zoning, utilities, building and engineering, along with the applicant, where the town provides initial comments and feedback and it's a really good time for the applicant to uh, figure out if their proposal is in fact feasible uh, with our codes and ordinances and all of our requirements by different departments. Um, following the pre-application conference, if they'd like to proceed, they go through their formal site plan review application, which is again reviewed by all four departments. That's engineering, utilities, building, along with planning and zoning. And we do not bring an application to planning commission and town council, but it's, that does not comply um, with our codes and ordinances currently. Um, so sometimes step three uh, is usually the longest step because it takes multiple reviews to get those um, applicants in compliance with our codes and ordinances. Then steps four and five are planning commission and town council public hearings. And should council approve a site plan, that's when they're allowed to apply for their building permit. So steps four and five are going to be uh, removed from the overall process. Moving forward to the subdivision ordinance side of things, um, both preliminary plots and final plots are reviewed based on objective criteria set forth in our zoning ordinance and more so our subdivision ordinance. And a subdivision follows three main steps. First, I have to go through a pre-application conference, uh, which I outlined on that last, last slide. Second is a preliminary plat application and that is the process of a subdivision that goes through planning commission and town council. And third is the final plat, uh, if the preliminary plat is approved and that is usually consent agenda item. And once again, House Bill twenty-four forty-seven requires both the preliminary plat and the final plat to be a fully administrative process. And then subdivision ordinance exceptions still will require council approval. So that's whenever an applicant wants to deviate from a specific requirement in the subdivision ordinance, uh, council still would have to approve that deviation. And then the last thing I wanted to note is since two thousand eight, um, only two subdivisions have obtained final plat approval. Uh, that's Reserve at Black Mountain behind McDonald's off Carefree Highway. And that's Galloway Ridge off Schoolhouse and Cave Creek Road. And then one additional application has obtained preliminary plat approval and is awaiting final plat approval, which is Hidden Canyon. So the reason I put this on there is to show just in the grand scheme of things, in the past seventeen years, we've had only two subdivisions that have gotten the final plat approval. And looking ahead to the foreseeable future, uh, this trend of little subdivisions is probably going to continue. So moving forward to the public notification strategy for site plans and preliminary plots. Um, once again, if all objective criteria are met for one of these administrative applications, the town must approve that application. Despite this, uh, informing residents of recently approved site plans and plots remains an important step. So our public notification strategy has multiple elements to it. First, we'll do a mailing notice of approval to residents within five hundred feet of the project. Currently, we do a notice of public hearing to residents, residents within five hundred feet. Um, obviously, since we can't do a public hearing, we'll do the notice of approval instead. In addition, um, we'll provide updates of recently approved applications at the next planning commission meeting and Luke will provide them at the Development Services Council Quarterly Report. Um, in addition, planning staff is currently in the process of publishing a GIS dashboard on the town website, which depicts all active and recently approved planning and zoning cases for the public to view. This is something we're really excited about. Basically, it's, it's an interactive map that any member of the public can go on and they'll be able to see where the specific applications are occurring, what their status is, um, as well as who the staff contact member is and who the applicant is. So it gives members of the public, uh, the ability to contact staff or the applicant should they have questions. Um, and other municipalities have recently implemented these as well and have had a lot of success with them. So we're hoping to do the same. And then lastly, uh, which we try to emphasize the most is planning staff is available, available to meet with and answer questions from residents regarding specific applications.
We need that slide. I'd like to compliment you and Luke, uh, that one there. As you know, I'm, I'm with the risk pool and I do land use for all seventy cities and towns. As cities and towns are trying to grapple with this, uh, in effect, going from legislative to administrative, how do you keep the public informed? This is the best one I've seen. And I'm giving this and it's in your code as well, not encoding the book. I'm giving this to the others to say, this is how you can keep the people informed. You've, you accomplished the goal of public input. But no offense, not with the, the burden of all the public hearings and meetings that we'll have before the council and the commission. This is a very good slide. Thank you.
Thank you. And then just moving forward, oops, to the last slide, which is the lot split portion, um, which is that agenda item number seven, ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash fifteen. Um, the town code currently requires that lot splits of two and a half acres or less be approved by council and these are typically consent agenda items. Whereas lot splits greater than two and a half acres, we already review and approve in-house. And so the proposed amendment to the town code, yeah, you can see on the right, just makes it so that all um, lot split applications are reviewed administratively so that we're in conformance with the House Bill. And the last thing I just wanted to note is this does not impact any review criteria. Same can be said for the site plan interview process as well as a plating process. Simply, it's the process itself that we're amending so that we're in compliance with this House Bill. So an example that we provided, um, a DR forty-three property must still have a minimum of eighty-six thousand square feet if they want to split their lot in half. That, that's because forty-three and DR forty-three stands for forty-three thousand square feet as the minimum lot size. Multiply that by two and that gets you eighty-six thousand square feet.
So DR one ninety, you could split into two lots?
So, uh, Councilman Rhodes, for a DR one ninety lot split, you'd have to have three hundred eighty thousand square feet if you want to split it in half. Uh, because you have to meet the minimum lot size of a hundred ninety thousand square feet.
Okay. Thank you.
And that concludes my presentation. So I'm happy to answer any other questions.
Congratulations on the one-year-old. Questions from council? Cynthia?
Uh, one quick one. Um, the notice to, uh, residents, uh, five hundred feet from the involved property, but there's new language on appeals to the Board of Adjustment is a property owner within three hundred feet of the boundary of the property. And is there a reason that that's a lesser distance for Board of Adjustments?
Yeah, so variances and appeals are actually, um, taken out of state law currently. So that's, that's where the three hundred feet comes from. So i- instead of being at conflict with an existing state statute regulation that governs who can be an aggrieved party, it's three hundred feet.
Thank you.
Questions down here?
I just have one quick question. So are we using the definitions of acre or square foot? Uh, we have a lot on my neighborhood. It was, uh, seven acres and it was split into two lots. So we were probably not using the acre definition.
Yeah, so it's all based off square footage. So.
That change, just out of curiosity.
Um, the, so.
Cause it was like D two point five.
Correct. So you recall the old zoning classifications, the D one A, the D two five A. When we annex to save Spurcross is, uh, when we had to come up with a, uh, something that was comparable to those, uh, privately held properties to get to Spurcross. They had, uh, uh, DR seventy, uh, or R seventy, RU seventy in county. So we had to come up with, okay, how do we get there? We can't call it D one point seven five A. So that's when the shift to let's just put it towards a square footage minimum. So DR forty-three, forty-three thousand five hundred and sixty square feet is an acre, but forty-three is kind of the, the soft language for.
That's a pretty fascinating piece of obscure trivia because, no, I'm serious. I mean, because you guys, I guess, get it. I mean, uh, and now I, I never knew the answer to that question. I'm really glad to know.
Right. We had, yeah, no, that's right. It's, we had to, we had to give them comparable zoning to our classifications. And instead of trying to discern between what we had, Cave Creek being unique, let's do D one A and D two A and let's, let's just do it how county does it to, in order to annex those much more smoothly. We can give them a comparable, um, classification that they had in county by shifting our classifications to meet theirs.
Thank you. That's, I really, I learned something, but.
Tom, you're easily entertained.
Well, I love this stuff. I love the, I'm, yeah, I'm, I'm awake again.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, other questions? When the question session? Um, I have, it, it seems to me like council's input now is going to be on making sure that the codes reflect what council's wishes are as a direction to planning staff. That, that is our input now. It's not in these discretionary hearings and things like that. Would that be accurate?
Correct, yeah.
Because?
All applications that you're going to hear from a planning and zoning perspective moving forward, you have full discretion, uh, for those applications.
And, and we, we have, uh, we have a joint, uh, council planning session coming up and that would be the time for council to make their list of things that they don't like about, uh, presuming this legislature prevents it, uh, to get our, our code aligned with what the council wants because it's going to be an administrative procedure from then on, from now on. Yeah. Okay, other, uh, questions? Uh, public comment?
I have no one.
There is none. So we're looking for, uh, now we are.
I'll, I'll make the motion.
Are, are we going to do all five at once? Are you doing, I guess we do one.
They need to be separated out.
Okay, but there's no presentation for all?
Nope.
Okay, so.
We've emptied the clip.
Dusty, you're first.
Uh, I move that we approve the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-five dash thirteen, uh, and ordinance to the mayor and council. Uh, of town of Cave Creek, Maricopa County, Arizona, amending zoning ordinance, chapter two residential zones, chapter three commercial zones, chapter twelve site plans, chapter fourteen. Officers' boards and commissions and chapter fifteen zoning procedures to be in court, uh, in conformance of HB twenty-four forty-seven.
Second.
Okay, uh, you have the motion, Dusty?
It's not like we have a choice.
Oh, yeah.
Cynthia, do you want to try?
Well, just that, uh, twenty-four forty-seven, uh, requires what the planning commission understood uh, back in twenty twenty-three, that the site plan review process, uh, should be administrative in nature.
I'm glad I voted for that at the time.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. We're on to, uh, number, who wants to do the motion on six?
I move that we have, that the council approves first reading ordinance twenty twenty-five dash fourteen and ordinance to the mayor and council of town of Cave Creek, Maricopa County, Arizona, amending the subdivision ordinance, chapter one principles and policies, chapter two planning standards and procedures, chapter four engineering standards and procedures, chapter six lot splits, line adjustments and assemblages, chapter seven financial assurance agreement and chapter eight, the definitions to be in conformance with HB twenty-four forty-seven. Oh, and complete the administrative updates.
Sounds like you're going to be the second.
Oh, okay.
Again, there's no choice here.
Yeah. Okay, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seven zero passing and we're on to number seven.
Okay, I will move approval of the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-five fifteen and ordinance of the mayor and council of the town of Cave Creek, Maricopa County, Arizona, amending the Cave Creek Town Code Title XP Land Usage, Chapter one fifty-three subdivision of land, Section one five three point oh one, land splits to be in conformance with Arizona House Bill twenty-four forty-seven.
Second.
As he said.
Be real danger if we didn't.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. I think that.
Mayor, members of council, just real quick, um, just briefly for the, the sake of time for the second reading on these three matters specifically, since there were no amendments to any of the proposed amendments, staff is going to admit those from the packet. You'll just receive the, the ordinance and the, um, the summary of the changes. Is that, is that a pair? Do you want the entire?
Do you may have an objection to that?
No.
No objection.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Good night. Almost three hours. So what's, what's your child's name? Oh.